Welcome, everyone. It's now 6 o'clock. It's Tuesday, October 9, 2018. We're in the Sierra Room of the Community Center in Carson City. It is a time, date, and place for the scheduled Carson City School District School Board Meeting, of which tonight will consist of two parts. The first part will be a board workshop, and then the second part will be the regular business meeting of the board. And with that, we'll start with Agenda Item Number One, and that's the Flag Slute. Joe?
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, the invisible, where the liberty and justice
Before we begin, let me just let the record reflect that we have Lupe Ramirez, a school trustee-elect from District 1 in the audience, and Richard Varner, a school trustee-elect, District 4. That, Agenda Item Number Two, a roundtable discussion among board members, staff, and principals, addressing the following topics. This is progress update of school performance plans related to the Nevada School Performance Framework, an SPF for Seliger and Fritsch Elementary Schools. And with that, is there any introduction by you, Sue, or are we going to go right to...
I'm going straight to the...
Okay.
Stars. I don't know about that. Good evening, board members, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about my favorite school. Seliger is very proud of the student growth gains that we made last year in 2017-18 school year. While we remained a three-star school designation for our rating, we grew from 50.5 points up to 62.5. And so that growth moved us from being one-half of a point away from being a two-star up to within four points of being a four-star school. As you know, every school is rated in five areas. There's academic achievement, student growth, English learning, and closing the achievement gap and student engagement. Student growth is the biggest area for the most growth, ranked with 35 points, and that's where we chose to put our energy last year. And we grew from 14.5 to 25 points with student growth. Other highlights that we are proud of include growing in academic achievement by 3% in math and ELA and overall proficiency. We also closed the opportunity gap in English Language Arts by 11%. Seliger had the most growth on S-Back comparing the same students from 3rd grade to 4th grade in ELA, and we also had the lowest rate of chronically absent students in the district. According to the results on the Nevada School Climate Social Emotional Learning Survey, Seliger has a caring environment that promotes positive social and emotional learning, and our students feel emotionally safe to come to school, and the relationships between staff and students was ranked above the district and state average. We have some beliefs about why we achieved these results, and the number-one reason is, of course, our dedicated staff. As you know, teachers are a very hard-working bunch, and it seems we change or add something new to their plates every year, and they really rallied around these changes. Lately, we've added a new math and science curriculum. We've beefed up our expectations around Mastery Connect, and we've also added our MIUs to ELA Math and Science. This past January, all but two teachers at Seliger in 1st to 5th grade volunteered to pilot the ELA MIUs. Another reason that we believe we saw great growth centers around the goal-setting that was done with our individualized learning plans. Teachers work with students on the very specific areas that they need and communicate these goals with parents and work with families to help meet them. In addition, some teachers added student learning goals to their own evaluation goals with the NEPF, and that added another layer of incentive for students to do well as well. In January of 2018, Seliger began focusing on the conditional growth that students made from the fall 2017 maps to the winter 2018 maps. Every teacher identified every student who either met or exceeded their goal for growth, and then they identified students who made low achievement and low growth, up to the students who made high achievement and high growth. The teachers set up action steps on how to move each quadrant of students, and we monitored our actions monthly for improvement. We also had students set goals for themselves with map testing, and we believe that the student buy-in helped us see the great gains in achievement. Pirate Club is another reason that we saw growth. It's an after-school program that we run three days a week, and we identified students in the 20% to 40% range based on their map scores. Those students were invited to attend Pirate Club, and teachers focused on their ILP goals. And we would like to take a moment to thank you all for helping us continue that program this year. Due to funding, we were able to continue that with your help, so thank you for that. We have next steps. While Seliger is very proud of what we've accomplished, we still have areas in which we want and need to improve. We need to reduce the percent of non-proficient students. In math and ELA, there are four specific subgroups. We need to work on our...focus on our Caucasian students with IEPs, students of English Language Learning, and students on free or reduced lunch. We need to reduce the students in these categories not meeting proficiency by at least 10%, or we will be labeled downward trending. We also need to improve attendance. Even though we had the lowest percentage of chronically absent students, we need to improve our attendance rate since students can't achieve if they don't attend. We had about 60 students who missed 18 days or more of instruction throughout the year, and that needs to be reduced by 10% as well, to be recognized by the state in the category of student engagement. All good pirates have a treasure map, and we believe that the treasure map to help us get there is four-pronged. The first is to increase teacher understanding of standards at the appropriate depth of rigor. We plan to use time in our weekly PLC conversations using the Book of the Common Core Companion and coaching our feedback after observations. Teachers are beginning to create formative assessments in Mastery Connect and tracking student progress using that as a tool. We are including our English learner teacher and our resource teachers in these conversations to help front-load vocabulary and the concepts before they are taught. Students who are near mastery or in need of remediation, not demonstrating proficiency, are given extra assistance during time that we've carved out called "when," which is "what I need" time, and instruction helps support their needs during that time. We also need to involve our parents as our partners. We've had great success with academic parent-teacher teams. We started with three teachers last year, and we grew to eight teachers this year who are involved in this program. It's really a phenomenal format for parent-teacher conferences. They spend extended time with the teacher, looking at class data. They see where their student is within that class dataset, and they learn fun games to practice at home in creating games with the provided tools that the school gives them. And so we hope to extend this model of conferencing in the future. We also need to get our students to engage more deeply in their learning. With the help of MIU learning guides, the students are beginning to have greater knowledge of their current level of understanding. The self-evaluation is a key tool for students to see where they are going in the unit, and it helps to know specific criteria for success. They can monitor their own progress using the rubric, and it's been a nice correlation with the NEPF Standard 4, with metacognition, students thinking about their...what they are learning and why. They know why they've...they know what they've learned and why they can describe it to others. At Seliger, we have seen several teachers focus on this metacognition as their own professional practice goal, and students have rated and reflected on their understanding of the standards in their journals and/or feedback to the teacher. And lastly, we want to recognize students who come to school. We have an attendance team who monitors our stats monthly and provides incentive to the best attendance by grade level. We are also recognizing attendance at our quarterly excellence celebrations and working with PTO for grade incentives to recognize good attendance at these celebrations. We plan to use our Safe School Professional to help us work with families who struggle to get to school on time by offering support with community resources and also making home visits. So in a nutshell, we're proud of our gains, yet we know we need to keep working hard to improve, and we have a game plan to make those improvements.
First of all, any comments? The board wish you ask any questions. Laura?
I have a question. On the individualized learning plans, those ILPs are for the Read by Grade 3 grant. Are they just being used with K through 3, or are you using them for all grade levels at Seliger?
We've extended it all K-5. So when we began with the K-3, those students are now 5th graders, so we've just rolled it up each year as they continue.
Paul, yeah, I have a question that we're going to...we're going to work backwards into the learner center model here of approach to learning. What's the difference between remediation and intervention?
Well, remediation is on the back end after the student has already taken a test, and we know that they need to have improvement or help in a certain area. And intervention, when the teachers have their formative assessments along the way before they take a big test, they're able to intervene ahead of time before a big test to be able to help the student.
Okay, and that's my concern. Do all of the teachers at Seliger understand what the learner center model is and the purpose of the learning guides? You mentioned this, but...
Sure.
Just going forward, you know, the learning guides were intended for intervention purposes, not wait for the map test where we have to do things on the back end.
Sure.
We catch the kids early, all of them. So have you gone through a process of explaining or making sure everybody understands what this is?
We have, and I think probably at any site, there's a varying degree of understanding with the teachers. And so, you know, we've had seven teachers join us this year. Those new folks are not as well-versed as some of our more veteran staff, but it's something that we talk about in our PLCs weekly.
And so with the learning guide, you're talking about this. This program "when" or whatever, I mean, is that...do you have staff that support the kids based upon how they learn, or how does it work?
So "when is what I need," and so the teachers design...it's 30 minutes a day, and the teachers design the instruction for the student during that time based on how they're doing on the formative assessments in the classroom. So some students might be working on reading while other students might be working on math at that time. And we have our English learner staff and our resource staff, including paraprofessionals that push in during that time to help the students.
And I just want to say something that I think that it's really hard to understand if you don't work in a school that uses the map assessment, because that's a formative assessment. And so the state's kind of added on the summative piece because of Read by Grade 3, but as an educator, you get that, and it not only tells you where the students need remediation, but if you use your Descartes, it also tells you what's next, and you could also plan interventions. And so effective schools are using it for both. And so I think that we want to understand that it's a constant framework all the way through elementary to middle school, really, and so it's kind of twofold.
And no, I'm not taking away from the map, but how often is the map given?
Every time.
Learning guides are intended for a three-week period.
Achievement, depending on how long...
Yeah, yeah.
Use your mic, Paul.
Oh, I...sorry. I'm sorry.
I call you Ron Jr.
I must have subconsciously hit that I was done. I don't know. I don't remember hitting the button. So yes, depending on how long the unit is, roughly three weeks would be the standard, but those self-evaluation guides are used with the students as they go through the process of the unit.
And Chad, you're at the table, and tell me what you've got or what's going to be different this year going forward with the use of the learning guides?
Well, I've talked to all the principals, and we all agree that the learning guides are critical, because and we talked about that at our STT kickoff, that students need to be self-aware. And if they're part of the learning process, they're going to be...you're going to get more out of them. And so the next step was going to be different this year, and we talked, and we're still working on this part, but I would like to see students with some form of like, we can call them what we want, but it's like a learning guide, but not only that, but like a data folder, and where everything they're doing, they're self-assessing. I'd like to be able to walk into a classroom and the standards they're working on, I'd like them to be able to say, hey, I'm not doing so well here, if I asked them, but I'm doing really good here. And ideally, you do that on a day where, say, a Thursday, where Friday, if teachers every week, they reviewed those on a Thursday, and then they could identify those students, and on Fridays, they could intervene, or they could have, you know, where they could do some center work or some kind of work to get them caught up before they move on. And it also informs next instructional steps before the lesson planning, so that's the pie in the sky. That's what we'd like to see, but we're not there yet. But we are...I can tell you, walking through classrooms just this past week, we're moving pretty quick.
Also, are all the teachers now using the learning guides?
Yes. I think this shuts off on itself. Yes.
And so how do you monitor that, or how do you...
I see them being used when I do observations. So I just saw it last week in a 2nd grade class when they were using that with science. I've seen it in 3rd grade where a teacher at the kidney table has a reading group, and she's going over the self-evaluation tool and asking sentence by sentence, have we done this? Have we accomplished this yet? And the students are answering yes or no based on where they are. And then in 4th grade, I've seen students actually reflecting on where they are using the learning guides in their own journals.
Okay, go ahead.
I said this a couple weeks ago, and I think it's the same. I think I want to be really careful that in an elementary classroom, a learning guide, a lot of teachers use what you might call like an anchor chart, where you have your learning objective, you have your key vocabulary, you have your what you're supposed to learn in the lesson, and so maybe they refer back to the poster. It might not necessarily be a piece of paper each kid gets, and maybe in 5th grade, it does look like that, or 4th grade, but I think that I want to be careful that we're not being prescriptive of, we want a learning guide to look like blank, because the teachers need to be able to use it in a way that's going to really work for them.
No, no, I agree in that, you know, in that sense. It could be in the Chromebooks, it could be in any form. You know, my concern would be, are the learning guides geared to the standards? So the essential questions are geared to the Nevada Performance Standards? And all the teachers are up on all the standards?
We work on that every week with our PLCs and our conversations.
Okay, they're not. They probably mean well, but we're not quite there yet, so.
And Ron, do you mind if I piggyback in on that? So part of that, too, is bringing in new staff members, and, you know, we've had turnover this last year, and bringing in new teachers. So it's kind of a wake-up call for us to go back and start looking at the standards again and really getting in-depth. You know, it used to be back in the time that the term was unwrapping the standard and looking at it, and so now it's going in-depth to see that what does the standard really mean, and what we're doing in the classroom to meet that standard. And when you're talking about the learning guide, yes, the learning guide does focus on that, especially with the essential questions. And when you walk into a classroom, many of those essential questions are posted in many different ways. It could be within, you know, we were saying, you know, different things you were talking about, the Chromebook, whatever, but a lot of times, they're using in their interactive notebooks, so the kids refer back to it several times and relate it back to what they're learning in the classroom, and then they can say...so we go in there, and the first thing I always do is talk to the student. What are you doing? Why are you doing this? And they actually can tell me that, and how's it relate to the standard? You know, on my phone, I have every standard there, so I can go in, I can check to see what's going on there. But when we start looking at it, and I think the biggest eye-opener for us this year is start building formative assessments into Mastery Connect. And what we had to do with those, and, you know, and our goal is that we have a formative assessment for every standard. So when we started building those formative assessments, we had to look at the standard and determine what we wanted those students really to learn within that, and how we can measure what they're learning. And so that gave us an opportunity to go back and reevaluate the standard, look at to see what does it mean. For example, a 3rd grade standard for math for multiplication says, you know, they have to fax to 100. So when you would look at that, you would think that'd be just like 10 times 10 is 100, and that's where you'd have to get to. But when you go in-depth, we realize that that's more than that, because there are 12s, factors of 12 there are less than 100. And so thinking about that, we had to go back and reshift our formative assessments to meet those students' needs so they're successful and, you know, in their track for this year, so.
Okay, no. And Dan, since you've begun, why don't you go through where you're going this year?
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry, Dan. Did I...I heard the speech in May, I just didn't hear. What do you pretend...what do you...what did you do that made your student growth over 11%? I mean, what program or...
No, it was just paying attention to our students and how they learned. So in January, we looked at every single student, and there's a quadrant report that we received that shows how many students are achieving versus the growth that they're making. And so we, as a staff, spent time, teachers created action steps on every quadrant and what they were going to do for those individual students, and then we monitored that monthly between January and when they took the spring maps in April, May.
Thank you.
First of all, congratulations. I think Seliger...
Thank you.
You know, did well, and that's important, because as we all know, we've got...everybody has room to grow. You know, I noticed, though, when I look at...not though. When I look at the S-Back results, you know, the 3rd to 4th grade cohort, a lot of did exceptionally well in ELA, right? It grew from 44% to 61%. Math, we grew, but not nearly as much. Do you...I'm wondering, why did we spend more time with ELA? Math always seems to be the lower nugget that, you know, that always lags behind. How do we bump math up a little bit to get these kids more proficient there?
Well, last year was the first year for our new resource called Pearson, so our teachers had a learning curve of learning the new curriculum that they were to teach. And so I think we had greater gains in ELA. We focused on both. It was both a part of our school performance plan, but we just saw greater gains in ELA focusing on MIUs versus a brand-new curriculum.
Okay.
Thanks.
And really, you got... You know, and think about, last year was the first year we rolled out a lot of MIUs, especially in ELA and math, and I think the teachers that would pilot the MIU last year had greater success on the S-Back, and we found. So that is what we're excited about for the future here, that they are rolling with this and going. You know, Joe, you were saying that one area is math, and that's something that we felt we did well last year. We did have a growth in math at Fritsch. One of the focuses that we're looking at, and I think it's a continuation we're always looking at within our district, is the math fluency and looking at those math facts and really pinpointing ways that we can increase that. One example we're looking at is, like, for 5th grade math standards, is that there...I think there's only one standard that the kids don't need to be fluent with their multiplication facts, and so that's what we're really working on. And then also bridging that with families at home as well, as part of our family engagement, is saying, you know, help us here, that there is easy ways that you can do math facts at home. And, you know, there's online programs, flashcards, when you're in the car driving, whatever, we're trying to push that with families as part of that and family engagement, so we can get that bridge to...from school to home, and that's going to be a big support there, because it's, you know, all the way through, they have to know from addition to, you know, facts, all the way up to multiplication, really work on that. So that's a big goal.
Go ahead and give us an overview of Fritsch.
Be glad to, Ron. Thank you. So Fritsch, you know, last year, we were a four-star school, and I think my biggest nightmare was to drop to a three school. Being labeled as a four-star school, that was something that we were very proud of, we were excited about, and it's a tough job to keep there to stay a four-star school. But during this last year, we...our focus changed. We were focusing on math. We were focusing on sub pops last year, and we saw some tremendous growth with that. So, you know, during that year, we did miss a four-star school ranking this last year by two points, and that was exciting, but also disappointing, we were so close to that rank there. But our focus that year...last year was really working on our EL learners and seeing what we could do. We highlighted those students, we found who they were, doing some data digs with them and looking at their instructions, support them, and looking at when they take their access test. And remember, the EL students, they are bombarded with lots of testing. They have their map, they have the access test, then they have their S-Back testing, and so all this is a big indicator for proficiency for the year. So what we did is, we wanted to really focus on those students, so we had 15 students that we really worked on hard, and we were able to move those students to be proficient on the access test, which we were really excited about, because the year prior, we only had one student when they changed the assessment out. And that was like, wow, that was our wake-up call, from 1 to 15 students, so we really increased that by 150%. So we were really excited about that. And the other part was, is that with the rollout of the math, we had a lot of help, and we want to thank you guys and thank the district for that, is having our STEM coaches and our EL coaches really supporting teachers with that, coming in and giving them assistance of what that looks like, and what...and another part is just the observation, to see what's going on in the classrooms. A big thing we rolled out this last year was called "Observe Me," and we are pushing for other teachers to go in, observe other teachers, and give them feedback of what they saw. And so one of the big things at Fritsch that we've been working on is three things. We want to instill love for learning, we want to ignite a love for learning, and we want to...hold on, I forgot the third one. Still ignite and still love of learning for those students. And so that's what we've been going in and giving a lot of feedback to them, and then getting feedback from teachers, from students as well, and seeing what they're doing. One other area that we were...wake-up call with us was our absenteeism, working with that. We did increase our percentage of students that were absent, and so our goal for this year is we want to decrease that. We were up to...we were at below...the year prior, we were at 5.7, and then last year, we increased that to 10.2% of our students were chronically absent, and that means more than 18 days of school. And so the big thing we're working on this year is getting the message out to parents of what that means. What does it mean when you take a family vacation? Because that's what hits us the most, is we have some parents who will pull their kids out for two to three weeks to go to school. That's 15 days out of 18 days of, you know, where they're at. So we're trying to talk to them about some other ways that we can work with them. Another piece is, when we looked at our SEL survey, our Social Emotional Learning Survey done by the state, we looked at areas that we wanted to focus on. And so a big part of that was, we want to work on building relationships between the students and the teachers. One of the things that our social worker is pushing into is a program that the teachers are having put in their classroom is called "I Want My Teacher to Know." And so that would be something that happened with a student, so they can bring that in and talk about it with their student, or you can use it to...for their instruction as well. So there's something that's really interesting that the student is doing, they can involve that student in the instruction with what they've learned. Many times, we find out that maybe they got a new puppy, it might be that their dad was arrested over the weekend. And so what it is, is we can find support to help those students, so they feel comfortable and to be able to talk to a teacher about anything, but also refer to our social worker if we needed. So one of the big things that we're looking to strive to do better at Fritsch is to...we really, you know, again, every year, is increasing overall proficiency with our ELA and our math students. And so a big part of that is working with my leadership team alongside with our teachers to really implement the MIUs successfully. And so that's been a good...a big plan for this year. We were lucky in that my vice principal, who came over from Carson High School, had some experience in the learning guides and MIUs being at the high school. So he came on right on board and was really supportive with the teachers and helping that, and we had teachers actually building their own learning guides at first to see what they could do. So the transition this year has been a little bit easier. They know what to look like, they know about the metacognition piece of it and how to rate themselves and how the students rate them, but we're not just using the MIU to rate them. There's other ways that we're sharing metacognition in the classroom, the easy way, because one thing we ran into is how, you know, a student doing a self-reflection in 5th grade is a lot different than kindergarten and how those kids do it. And so it's a big point of having those students just express themselves to the teacher, to another friend, whatever it may be, to share what they...understanding is what they're learning, and then what they want to do next, where they want to take their learning, and that's been a big, I guess, a big excitement, really, to see those kids express their feelings about where they like to take their learning and what they want to do. And so with goal-setting and sitting down with students, they're taking control of their learning and want to do it, and it's nice that we've had a lot of our teachers go through the GATE training program and see how it's easily done with the GATE students that we can do with all students. And so a big part of that is just building a menu of, you know, education or a menu of instructional practices or whatever it may be, a way they like to explore their learning and go in different directions. So we're excited that that's happening. Like I said earlier, is we're really diving into building those formative assessments this year, and that's important. Like, I was really impressed today during our PLC meetings, the teachers are coming in with... in with, uh, different, uh, resources to come in and build an informative assessment. And our focus this week has been on ELA, looking at the ELA MIUs, and seeing about what they can do for informative, for informational texts, and how they can build a short formative assessment to see where their students are. Um, the discussion during our kindergarten first grade is really looking at the phonics and what they can use with member center and using the Fast Track phonics, was part of the SFA program, how they're using that data to support their students and find out their area needs, what they can work on. Um, I want to thank you all for pushing to support the Read by Three grant, even though we did not get it. We were really excited to, um, be able to retain our tutors this last year. We found that they were the most effective part with our instruction, that they could have some real, um, intense intervention time with the students and help them, support them. All right, we did have an after-school program last year, we do not have one this year. So we had what we called the Dog Squad, and so that was just our dynamite students, we wanted to support them. But it was really hard after school with a lot of different activities to pinpoint the students, we really wanted to get them there to really work on them. We were using a different program for the after-school, so it wasn't the same thing like they're doing in the regular day. We were using the Reach program, which was, um, it was geared towards the EL learners, but it was mostly used during the summer school program. And so we thought, you know, if it works so well during the summer school program, we're going to use it after school. And that's what we did for our instruction for after-school program. We did see some growth with students that we had targeted, but we felt we saw more growth with our tutors than we did with the after-school program. And so, um, our big focus this year within our PLCs is we've changed our name to our PLCs to our art sessions. And so what we're doing is, we're analyzing data. And so we've branched from being data collectors to data users, and that's been our, one of our big goals this year, is we want our teachers to come in with map data, with their formative assessment data, with their Mastery Connect data, their observational data, whatever they have, and open, and have an open conversation with their groups, with their class, with their teammates, about what they can do to support all students. And so, that's the big thing, it's not my students, it's not theirs, it's a team. So that's what's nice thing about the grade levels, they're looking at all students and bringing in our, our sped teachers, our, um, our ESL coordinator coming in and really seeing about what we can do to support all those students. And that's what we're excited about seeing that way. The other thing we want to look at is, like Paula was saying, is that, um, I think all of our schools in Carson have been put on a little watch list about our sub-populations and really focusing on those students. One of the areas, again, is our Hispanic population. We've targeted all the students that we want to see grow, and looked at what their levels were on S-Back, what their levels were in MAP, and seeing about setting some goals, working with those students to goal-set with them, to where they're going to be with winter testing, where they want to be at the fall, or, excuse me, at the spring, at the end of the year, and, uh, really work on making their rich growth this year. The other one is, um, looking at our free reduced population. It's hard for us to pinpoint those students, so we kind of work at the other ones because a lot of those students fall in that same population as well. Um, so again, like I said earlier, is the, our focus on our chronic, chronic absence students. We did, um, decrease in that area quite a bit by almost half, or we almost doubled that. And that was, um, a concern to us all when we saw that, but we're trying to find different ways. We've been working really hard with our social worker to pinpoint those students. We do, like Paula was saying, our intervention teams will look at students that, we do a weekly attendance check on them to see where they're at. We've found some students that are already, that are, are flagged, that they could be a chronic student this year of absence. And so we've looked it down, we've called parents, we've gone to several motels to visit families and say, "Let's go to the school," and get them out, and, um, you know, it's almost like dragging them to school, "Let's go, let's get you some lunch, let's get your day started and get going." And that's been effective. And then just to, you know, send a message out to families to say, "We've got to get you here to school, okay?" And have you stay here, okay? And so, those are the things that we've been working on, just to support, um, the growth that we want to anticipate this year, that we want to, you know, our goal is to rise again and be a four-star school. We're so close, and, and I think with what we can do, um, I think we'll be there again. And again, I think this year was a little wake-up call for us to see what we needed to improve in, and, uh, and that's what we are, that's what we're doing constantly right now.
Let me just, you made reference to your leadership team. What does that consist of? Who's on the leadership team?
So my leadership team, we, we meet weekly, and that's, um, myself, my vice principal, uh, my, both my coaches, my ESL coordinator, my social worker. And, and so we meet to go over a lot of different information. Then what we do is, so that's like umbrella of what we do for our management team, and then I take it down to our school performance team and share what information that we need to, um, what, what we want to segregate out to the other grade levels. And so one of our school performance teams, we have one teacher from each grade level, plus our specialists, and so they get together, they look at what we want to do for our school, our goals, for our action plan, for our student, our, our school performance plan. But then also, they are a, a communication piece for us to go back to their grade levels, share out the information, and come back with any concerns or anything that we need to work on. But also they're a great way to send, um, what our overall goals are, what our vision would be. So with our leadership team, we look at, each week, we look at students, we look at data from Mastery Connect, from MAP, we look at all those pieces to see what we want to do for our goals. And then, um, you know, we target some areas we want to work on for the, you know, we kind of put short, SMART goals together to say this is where we want to be within the next couple of weeks, whatever. And then, um, after that point, sharing it out to our school performance team, but then coming back and seeing if we're meeting those goals. So, I hope I answered your question there.
Well, taking that, then extending it to interventions. How often do you conduct interventions? Now Chad talked about, you know, like, maybe on Fridays, but how do you do this? How do you go about the intervention and getting directly to the kids?
So what we've done, especially with our K3 students, and answering your question, yes, for Fritsch also, we do our, you know, our purple folders, our individual literacy plans for all students that are below the 40th percentile, and focus on them. So as part of that intervention time, we have, in our academic day, we have pinpointed a time for intervention block. So what we're doing is, we're looking at students that have a like need, grouping them with a teacher and giving them extra support in that area, and seeing it might be that, you know, your question about remediation, it might be that a point that we want to, especially with our special ed students, is kind of forefront them, so front-load them about what they can do to be successful for the next standard or next MIU, and looking at those areas. So the big part of that is like the vocabulary piece of it, so the kids have an understanding of the vocabulary before they go into it, so they're not lost with that. And so that's a big part of the intervention time. It also may be that we are, um, looking at, um, maybe with our Mastery Connect data and looking at the students that are not doing really well in the formative assessment piece, pulling those kids and going back, and if that's be remediation to see, you know, what did they do wrong, what we want to look at. And that's why it's so great with the Mastery Connect piece is, is we can look at the formative assessment and, and see what maybe areas they're not strong in, and we can go back and support them in that area, and then reassess them again to see if they have grown. So that's part of the intervention block. And so the, you talk about intervention, you know, our biggest intervention is really looking at a different, um, you know, I guess, looking at a, a high, well, let me see. So a couple of things, our tutoring is one of the biggest interventions we do, it's a different tier, it's more one-on-one. We're really focused on the level of just breaking them up into smaller groups or, and doing that way. And then with our intervention time, we also use enrichment time in that, so that the kids who don't need a remediation, they have some time for enrichment as that as well.
Well, I would think ideally, we'd never have to get to remediation, we do it through intervention. And that's, that's the goal. I think all of us want to get there. Not a perfect world, but that's probably where we want to go. Chad, is there anything else you would like to, to add, is, you know, how this is coming together with help or intervention that gets directly to the kids, um, so that all are in line for student achievement and success?
I, there, I visited most, all the schools, and so I've had a chance to sit in on PLCs in just about every school. And I just want to comment, in one of the PLCs I saw, that was just a model PLC at Dan's school. Ideally, what we want to do, we want to get to a point where it's just like this grade level conducted their PLC. They walked in, they had their formative assessment data. Dan had a screen up, and he was taking notes on each child when they were reflecting on. He, he could see color coding what they, what the students were, that were struggling within that particular formative assessment. And then he gave the administrator and other people in the room an opportunity to ask, "Okay, how's it going? What's going on? What are the next, what, what can we do next to, to, and, you know, increase performance?" And then, and then what happened, teachers started sharing the resources with each other. And this all happened within like a 30, 40-minute period, and supporting each other. One of the teachers, if I remember correctly, was, didn't do so well on that formative assessment. And so the other teachers, they discussed that, that piece. And so, overall, that's, that's what we want to get to. But right now, it's, it's still new to elementary school. So not everyone is in a place where they are loading formative assessment into Mastery Connect, but when I say we're moving fast, they're, they really are, just within the past few weeks, we're getting better at that. And I, I think, easily by the end of the year, well, probably in the next few months, we're going to see more and more formative, formative assessments being loaded. And then what that will do, that will drive the PLCs. So where we want to go, we want solid grade-level meetings, weekly, where we are looking at what we taught, and then what it is that we need to do for next steps based on student performance. And we will be there this year. So that's, and then, and the icing on the cake, honestly, is what everyone has said here over and over, is that is that students are part of that process, that's the learner-centered model. And then we're going to be in really, really good shape, but a lot is happening this year. Teachers are becoming more aware of standards as well, because right now, it used to be, a lot of teachers would, myself included, would, would, um, put activities in the grade book without knowing what standard it was tied to. Well, now the process here in Carson City, they are forced to know what the standard, they have to know what the standard is that they're teaching, which is the first time I've ever seen it in a school district. So there's a lot of growing pains right now, but I just know in the end, this is going to, as we get better at what we do, and we become more aware of what we do, I, I really do think we're going to be leading the, the charge.
I, I want to clarify, we've been standard-based as long as I've been a teacher in this district, which was back in 2003. And I think we've been doing PLC since 2004. So it's not a new process, I just want to be clear. Maybe we're working on refining the process, but this isn't new.
Yep. And I, and I don't mean new, what I mean, we've all been standard-based for some time. Um, it's, even though we've been standard-based, I think that we haven't been fully aware, we haven't been linking what we do, our practice, with standards very well. So I don't know about Carson, I can speak for Washoe, we haven't been very good at that. That we still would enter activities in grade books without thought of what standards it was tied to. And I'd be willing to say that that's, 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 that was, that happened quite a bit.
You know, Mr. Walker, too, I think a lot of the PLC times were used for training, most of the time, too, and looking at, uh, their programs, or giving them support on the MIUs and all that. And I think that's where we're growing from, is not just a training opportunity, is giving the control to the teachers to really look at their data and to see, you know, they're student-focused now, and looking at what they're going to do to support the students.
And you know, and I kind of, and I alluded to this the last meeting, and I appreciate all the work, but I feel like we've been in three consecutive meetings, and we've had three consecutive workshops with the same information. There's only so many different ways to look at the school performance framework, and I'm not sure that stringing this along, meeting after meeting after meeting, is the most effective way. I think that we could really have done a presentation and gotten through most of this information in one night, and then kind of got into some other things. I just feel like we're kind of stringing this along and just kind of rehashing the same thing, meeting after meeting. And I think that, for everybody's sake, it's, let's get a solid presentation together and then let's keep it moving.
So, Susan Kima, for the record, if I could just say something, that this also meets the requirement of our schools to become, come before the board to share their school improvement plans. And instead of having the plan and going page by page, we've done variety of presentations around that. Yes, you have the NEPF data in your board pocket, but what they're really talking about is what are we, what do we learn from that information, and what are we going to do for our school improvement planning process? So that when I'm up here at the, at the end of this, when I'm up here and I'm having you approve the strategic plan to submit to the board, and providing you the data that's been attached to that for this past year, I can say also, I'm, I'm expected to say that you have also had an opportunity to talk to the schools about their school improvement planning process. So that's, this is really serving, as Agenda Item says, two, twofold. So, yes, we're talking about school improvement every meeting. I don't know that that's not a good, not a bad thing for our children, but at the same time-
And I'm not saying it's bad. What I'm saying is, I think we could do it in a smarter way. And, and I'm happy to share some ideas as we get into this next year, or whatever. But I mean, I'm just saying that I think there's a way to kind of consolidate some of this.
And we would take, you know, whatever suggestions you have, Mike, but for me personally, as a board member, I want to, I want to look face-to-face at, at these people. It makes a difference, because when I go out to the schools, I like to go and say, "You're telling me one thing," and I like to see it for the benefit of the kids. Are we doing something that helps these kids be successful? And, and you're, you're saying the words, and now it'd be nice just to go out. So I, I certainly appreciate this, each one, because each one is a little different. And it's different in a sense of, you know, putting these things together for the benefit of the kids. And when we have Chad here, I mean, we're putting all of this together, and I think, uh, it's, it's, it's good to have this information come forward, so. And you have board expectations, you know, we have your expectations, and so far, everything is, you know, come together for the benefit of the kids. We're, we're not perfect, we haven't gotten there, but we're getting there, we're moving. So, anyway. Any other comments?
Joe.
Joe.
So Dan, I was glad when you mentioned that, that the PLCs have gone more from, you know, you didn't use the term meetings, but a lot of the teachers I heard over the past couple of years are, you know, our training time, our planning time has disappeared, and these PLCs have become meetings. And to hear you say, put it, you know, we're trying to put this more in control of the teachers now, is really, I think, the, the direction we need to be going. I, I think we, we're always going to need data, we're always going to need to assess data, but we have the data. Um, I'm sure there's differences year to year on kid to kid, but we know the issues. Some of these issues have been the same issues for as, as long as I've been alive. Um, I was just curious, though, for Fritsch in, in particular, when I look at the, going to the S-Backs, the third to fourth grade cohort saw really good growth in ELA and math, but the fourth to fifth grade cohort both saw a decrease. And I'm just wondering, really, your thoughts on that? Not that we're doing anything wrong, but obviously we connected with the third to fourth, but haven't connected with the fourth to fifth.
And to be honest with you, Mr. Cassiope, the big reason for that is our fourth-grade teachers all grouped together to pilot the MIUs last year, and that's really was a big help in looking at that. But then looking at, they were the ones that kind of steerheaded our, our idea with our PLCs, is looking at those students and really finding, um, what their students' needs were and supporting them, and that's why we saw a huge growth in there. One of our teachers that led that, did lead this last year, she went back to Minnesota, but, um, we have some great replacements, and we were kind of concerned about that, that this team would kind of break up in the way they did. But watching them the last few weeks, it's just right back to where they're going. They're really student-centered, and looking at the data to show that they can support all students and make them work. And, and I think what, um, excuse me, what Mr. Swerzick was saying, we are there for the students, you know, and, and I think one of our overall goals is, is number one, is, you know, having a safe environment for them, so they will learn and feel comfortable there. And I think you see that when we have, you know, a break coming up, whatever, you know those kids don't want to be out of school, and I think that's a plus right there, and that's a bonus for us. But going back to that is that they want to learn, they're really striving to do better. And that's something that we should all be excited about.
Do you have any APPTs?
Yes, I have five teachers that are doing it this year.
And so what do you think the, because you guys dropped in every single category. What do you, overall, what do you think that attributed to, just because you scored higher last year? So there wasn't enough potential to get growth, or?
You know, I think we were really high last year, you know, and we wanted to maintain that, that was our overall goal, we just didn't do it. And I know, don't have any excuses there, I think we just didn't do it, and that's why we're focusing, we want to work from that and go from it and not use an excuse to say this is what happened, but we want to strive to do better, and that's what we're looking at.
And then just to piggyback on Joe's, one of the reasons, I think, a couple of us were gung ho about getting more with PLCs going the extra day, getting out earlier, early release days, sorry, was because we had gotten so much kickback from the teachers saying they didn't have enough time, especially with Read by Three with the learning guide. So that was real important for us to make sure that those teachers were given that a little extra time so that they could get those done and work on those, too, so.
Yeah, and so that's what actually we used our time yesterday for, is to start getting those plans together and supporting them. We do have parents, parent conferences coming up here in three weeks, and that was a really good time for teachers to collaborate, not just having 45 minutes in their PLC time to do it, but give them an afternoon to get started on them and really look at the data to determine what students needed to put in those plans. And that was, we appreciate that time. And all the early release days, I know you probably have, got some concerns from parents with them, but I want to reassure you that they have been very useful for us. It's not just a matter of having a meeting time, it's been a time for trainings, but also been time for teachers to get together and look at it. All concerns from, you know, from instructional, but also looking at classroom management, looking at, helping and supporting students' needs in the classroom with behavior, whatever it may be, that's been a really crucial time for us, so we do appreciate it.
I appreciate that feedback, thank you.
Questions, comments from the board? Okay, any questions, comments from the audience who'd like to join the conversation?
I just want to add that the Nevada Department of Education, I noticed this year, I think too, once they have their, now that they have their systems in place, is they're offering more support for schools and school districts. So October 15th, they've got an event called Be a Data Superhero where they're covering chronic absenteeism and the effects on college and career readiness and as well as how to look at the data and how to support your families and students. So we're sending groups of, we're sending folks from our district at all levels to that event.
Well, we're just about, you know, out of time, but, but just to conclude, I mean, to me, listening to both of you, you know, you're moving, we're moving forward in a really, you know, good direction. The PLCs, I think like Joe said, we're moving more to letting the teachers run the PLCs, not run, but, but to guide the PLCs based upon their needs, not an administrative need. So I mean, that's positive. That is, and Chad, do you, you join those meetings?
Chad Dix, for the record, yes, I try to sit in on as many as I can. And so it's a way I can learn about the schools and it's, I enjoy it.
Richard, anything you would like to add?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have something I'd like to share. I remember when we were new with Race to the Top, and one of the things that surfaced very quickly was a tremendous show of professional discussion. As, as we became more skilled at understanding the process, as we understood and saw what the data looked like, our teachers and our principals, our administrators really started talking about those professional steps that turned into significant growth for not only our students in the classroom, but for the teachers as professionals. And I'm starting to see and hear those kinds of things, and I think if you listen carefully, it was stated here today. And so I think we're at this really exciting place in our school district and am anxious for us to continue in this way, to more clearly understand the learner-centered model, and then to practice the concepts that are associated with it. So I'm proud of the work our folks are doing, and like I say, I think there's a number of really competitive individuals in our schools, and they all want to see this look a different way next year when we're around the table again.
Chad, I might have mentioned this last time, but the teachers I've spoken to at numerous schools really appreciate you being a part of as much of this as you can. I think having somebody focusing on the elementary schools has been, has been key, and it's kind of, I think it's energizing some of the teachers to say, I think all the teachers to say, you know, people are listening a little bit more now, you know, and it's not just advocating for the teachers, I know they're working hard, these folks are working amazingly hard, too. I can just tell you over at Boarderwick, my wife gets, and my wife's asleep by then, she's getting emails from Lisa all the time at nine, 10, sometimes 11 o'clock at night, everybody's working, nobody's sleeping. You know, and so the caution is, you know, finding this balance and getting where we want to go and not burning our people out at all levels, not just the teachers and the administrators, but the students and everybody else involved. But I think your presence in here has been, has been key, and I think people are seeing it and really appreciating it. And then just before I take a breath, saying the same thing to both of you, thanks for everything you're doing, I know everybody's working really hard, and sometimes we glum onto one particular, you know, group, the teachers or the students, but I mean, everybody's working tremendously hard. And I think as a board, we know that, we're seeing that, and we really appreciate it, and we don't want you to get burned out either. So thank you.
Additional questions, comments? Okay, well, thank all of you, you know, for coming forward and what you're doing going forward for, you know, for our students. This is going to be the big payoff. Hope to get out and see you soon, so, thank you. We'll take, we'll take about a 10-minute recess right now before we start the regular board meeting. At 7:00, we'll now call the regular school board meeting to order, and we'll go to Agenda Item Number 3, that's the adoption of the agenda as submitted. This is for possible action.
So moved, second.
Anyone have an issue, want to add, change, delete, or anything on the agenda? And seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, did you call for public comment?
Yeah, I asked if there was anybody who wanted to come forward to add, change, or delete anything on the agenda. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Number 4, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, audience. It's good to have you all joining us this evening. Mr. President, we have some, some high-profile students that are very important people. They're all wearing matching T-shirts, which means they're either on the same softball team, or they represent some of our finest students who are considering education as a vocation. I'd like to invite Mrs. Chandler, Mrs. Lobzinger, and Mrs. Macy to come forward, and they have a little presentation on our EDU 110 students.
Mr. President and trustees, we are honored to be recognized tonight before introducing our students. I would like to just recognize Ms. Chandler and Ms. Macy. These two ladies are working hard to prepare our students for university learning, and I'm grateful to be part of their team this year. Thank you also to Mr. Stokes, Dr. Delphine, Mrs. Kima, Mrs. Fuson, and UNR for supporting the program. We hope to continue to grow this program, and you'll see that we went from 16 students to 34 students this year, and we're hoping that these students will come back and teach for Carson City School District.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I would like to ask our students to come and stand across, we're a big group, so guys, if you will come forward. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to read to you the names of the students who are here tonight, and then we have several that could not join us so that you can appreciate the number of students that are in our classes. Connor Arnold, Savannah Brown, Allison Camelon, Cameron Clark, Juliana Diaz, Nicholas Fisher, Jane Flegler, Hannah Grundy, Michael Holbert, Gwendolyn Jimenez, Emelda Mata Garcia, Adalina Pacheco, Emily Richardson, Brooke Robinson, Aureli Sanabria Solis, Kimberlin Tarantino. And then we've selected, since we're such a big group, we selected three students to represent us, to talk with you tonight. And so I would like to invite Angel Valdez, Gloria Valdenegro Cortez, and Aja Reed to the microphones to speak with you.
Okay.
And introduce, say your name for the record.
Okay.
Do I say my name first? My name's Angel Valdez. Hello, Mr. President and members of the board. My name is Angel Valdez. I'm trying to find the right career for my future. I chose EDU 110 because it sounded very interesting to me, and I've considered it to be a career I might enjoy. I enjoy working with little kids since I'm the older brother of three siblings. While taking EDU 110, we visit different schools, we're all very kind and respectful, we have awesome teachers. Please continue to support this course so that others will have this great opportunity. Thank you.
Before you, we'll go to the next. Let me ask you, are you a junior, senior, sophomore?
Oh. I'm a senior.
And have you selected a school going, a college or university, then continue your education?
No, not yet. I've just considered either WNC or LTC.
Well, thank you for taking this class. Go ahead.
All right. Hello, Mr. President and members of the school board. My name is Gloria Valdenegro. I'm taking EDU 110 because I have always been passionate about the teaching field, and I have always wanted to explore this field more in depth. EDU 110 is a great class to offer at Carson High School for students interested or looking into the education field. You get to visit other schools during school hours to gain experience when you can outside of school. People will learn if going into the education field is right for them at an early age, so they will have time to change their career choices if they need to, and you get to meet other people who share the same interests as you. Through this program, we are meeting many adults who have a background and experience in education and can help us learn how to go about pursuing a career in education. Thank you.
The same questions. Are you a senior also?
No, I'm a junior.
Junior. And have you thought about what school or schools you want to go to?
I've really been considering UNR, like, this program is so awesome because you get to like have that credit, and it's just, yeah, I'm excited for it.
Okay, you said, you know, visiting other schools. You feel this is really worthwhile?
Yes, definitely.
And you really want to consider coming back and teaching in?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right. Aja, I know you from a couple of years ago at the One Up Club, but...
So hello, everyone, Mr. President and members of the school board. My name is Aja Reed, and I'll introduce myself first, beforehand, sorry. I want to, I'm a senior this year, and I want to go to WNC to get my associates, and then from there, I want to go to UNR and get my bachelor's in education. Okay. I knew I was passionate about becoming a teacher someday, and I'm using EDU 110 as a pathway into my career and to advance me to the next level. EDU 110 is a way for me to open a door into my future career as a teacher. This class will teach me a lot of skills and give me better insight of what kind of teacher I would like to be, such as primary or secondary. This class is the only class that truly relates to students like me who wish to have a career in education. I've always wanted to become a high school English teacher, and I believe this class will help me reach that goal. I love teaching and helping others in everything I'm involved in at Carson High School. EDU 110 will give all of us the opportunity to visit- EDU 110 will give all of us the opportunity to visit elementary schools and observe classes, sorry, offer an internship second semester, and teach me skills to use with my future students in the classroom.
Any comments? Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So I just want to say, so trustee Wilkie and I were laughing at your faces as you were all lining up. And the thought that I have, and I'm sure Mrs. Macy and Mrs. Chandler and Mrs. Lobzinger will agree with this, is in professional development as a teacher, they almost always start with some activity where you line up. And every teacher's eyes are rolling, everybody's mad they have to get up from their chairs. So if you master the lineup, you're on your way.
Just to raise a hand, how many of you are juniors? And then how many are seniors? Okay, great. You're going to enjoy this class tremendously. We're so glad you guys are doing this.
Well, first of all, I think I broke it. I think this is a great class. This is the second year, you know, that we've seen, we've seen a double in size, which is fantastic. And first of all, I think you've got three fantastic teachers preparing you for this. I mean, it's one thing to have teachers, but to have the caliber of teachers you have, number one, you're really fortunate. So thanks to the teachers. I lost Mrs. Chandler, she is. You have the same shirts. And I can tell you, one of my personal children is a senior right now at UNR. She wants to be an elementary school teacher. And to have benefited from a class like this for her and her peers, you know, this would have been fantastic. You're really going to have a leg up on other students coming in there, because they're really, in college now, just getting introduced to lesson planning at that level. I mean, she, like a lot of kids, went in and observed classes and volunteered, but to really be understanding lesson planning and just getting exposed to those kind of things now, while you're still a junior or a senior in high school, really is going to make that whole transition into, whether it's WNC, or eventually UNR, whatever your path is, so much easier for you, and it's going to make you just a more solid educator, you know, if you so choose to go into education. And I think, you know, we want all of you to become teachers and to come back to the school district and strong-arm this, you know, Dr. Delphin, and say, "I'm ready to teach, you know, put me in, coach." But, you know, even those of you that decide maybe this isn't for you, education is all about learning what you want to do. And, you know, if you decide, hey, teaching isn't for me, that's a value too. So, you know, so, you know, go your own path. You know, we want you to be teachers, but pick the path and pick, you know, the steps you want to do to, you know, to create the life you want for yourself. But I think this is a great start for all of you. And I had a chance to, was it last week, when you came here? And I'm still dizzy from turning around in circles trying to talk to all 36 of you. But, you know, just a great opportunity for us, too. I mean, I really think we had some good dialogue. It's hard to have, you know, extensive dialogue when there's 36 of you and one of me and two teachers. But I think the dialogue we had, it was good to see everybody engage and ask questions and express some of your ideas. So I enjoyed that, and I hope you continue on this path or whatever path you choose to do. So congratulations.
You know, and all that, I'm going to encourage all of you to keep, I don't think there's a better profession than being a teacher, where you get to help someone in life. And think about yourselves and the, your favorite teachers you had along the way. And now you have an opportunity to be that to everyone. And that is, that's so important. And I can't encourage you enough to, you know, just to continue, if you care about kids, and all of you seem to, go for it. Make it great. So, so thank all of you for being here, Cheryl, Sarah, Ms. Chandler. I mean, this is great. You've done a wonderful thing getting this going in, soon to be recognized. So anyway, okay, thank you.
We do expect 64 students now next year, so...
So, just one more question, Mrs. Lobzinger. This is the first year. Do you have people from the first year of last year? Do you have a second-year program for them?
So they have options. They are able to join the internship this next semester, so some of those juniors from last year will be doing that. They also can enroll in WNC and take the next level of EDU classes, and we have students doing that.
Any final comments? Any of you want to make, any of the students? I know there's three, but there's more than three. Just jump in and say whatever you like.
And if you find out that education isn't for you, your parents are going to thank you for not wasting that year at school trying to figure it out. So don't be afraid, if, like Mr. Joe said, that if it's not your path, at least you found out this way.
Mr. President, members of the board, I have a few other items. Tomorrow is the International Walk to School Day, and I know a number of our schools will be involved in walking to school. We would just put it out to our community, please be aware, there may be more people on bicycles, skateboards, and pedestrian traffic, so please be careful as you drive to school tomorrow. I also would like to announce that on Monday, there will be a district early release day. And lastly, I wanted to let the trustees know that our social workers' jobs are now posted. So within a short amount of time, our social workers will go from that independent contractor status to employees. And I would just want to say thanks to a number of folks who have helped to make that happen. It's been a great effort by a number of departments and individuals, and we're looking forward to that next step. And, Mr. President, that's my report.
And, Mr. Stokes, thank you. That's major. Social workers are now part of the teaching community, that social, emotional learning, yeah, our students just benefit so much from that. So, thank you. Okay, board reports, and we'll start with Casey Buford from Pioneer High School.
Hello there, my name is Casey Buford. I'm a sophomore at Pioneer High School. I have some announcements for you guys. First of all, congratulations to our Pioneer High School students, athletes, also playing sports at Carson High School. Steven Alfredo and Keith are playing football, and Saree is on the cheer squad. This is a good reminder that students at Pioneer High School have access to all CTE courses, RTC, culinary manufacturing activities, and sports at Carson High School. Also, ACT practice, ACT practice is in the online, the online lab has started. Last week, students were treated to a barbecue to celebrate an increase in ADA, a special thanks to Ms. Ward, Mr. Roder, Mr. Molson, Mr. Brown, and leadership students helping. Thank you to Carrie Finn for gaining most student flu shots administered in Pioneer High School history. The sign of suicide awareness and intervention will occur on October 18th. And the annual initiation installment ceremony for the Jag Pioneer chapter will be held at the Plaza Hotel in the event center on Wednesday, October 10th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Make-up pictures on October 12th. Join will be coming to Pioneer High School October 16th. Join provides educational occupational training for individuals seeking career, financial stability, and personal success. On October 17th, science classes will be visiting the Carson River watershed. Students will collect water samples to analyze its water quality. Also, students will spend some time helping the community. There's also no school on October 26th due to Nevada Day holiday. Attendance is important to success in school. Please be here every day, ready to learn. Remember to always follow school dress code, check with the officer if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Now, let me ask you a question. How are you doing with all the construction?
It's fine. No classroom being entered or anything. They tend to keep it quiet during school hours also, which is really great.
Are they inviting you to look at what they're doing?
Not, we can see it all when we walk outside. We can see it all, because all the teachers have their blinds open and everything, so we can see it all through all the classrooms. So it's nice to be able to see that. We don't really go inside the construction area, because they're working in there, and I don't think they have enough hard hats for all of us.
Casey, thank you. Okay, Ryan?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Ryan Lawler. I'm a junior at Carson High School. The most important announcements for now are homecoming week, which just started yesterday. Yesterday's activity was a bonfire over on the practice football fields at Carson High School. All the clubs at Carson High School, or at least most of them, they had a booth set up with, about their club and what was going on, and that was a real success. Tonight's activity for homecoming started about 30 minutes ago. There's a movie over at the big gym over at Carson High School. So that should be, that should get a pretty big attendance. And tomorrow's event, a fan favorite for all the students, is Wednesday Night Live here at the community center, starting at 6:30 PM. Thursday is Thursday Night Lights, sophomore and freshman football game. They're playing Demonte Ranch. And Friday, of course, we have the parade starting at 6:30, and immediately after is the game against Demonte Ranch. And the dance itself is October 13th, this coming Saturday, at 7:00 PM. And other important announcements, the PSATs are this Saturday at 7:00 AM if you signed up.
Done?
I know I've talked about it the last two meetings, it's finally here, Saturday, October 13th, pumpkin patch over at Seelager. It's the biggest fundraiser of the year for Seelager. All the proceeds go to this, go to this, basically, the teacher classes. Everything goes to the teachers, and come and get your pumpkin Saturday morning. It's 9:00 AM, and actually goes to 3:00 in the afternoon. There's all kinds of other activities as well. And also going on Saturday, the Carson High School Blue Thunder marching band actually starts their contest season. Besides performing on the halftime show, Friday night will be kind of their last wrap-up before the contest season. They'll have their full show Friday night at halftime, and then they start at Galena and compete against all of the Northern Nevada marching bands.
Yeah, the 7th grade girls from Carson Middle School beat the 7th grade girls from Eagle Valley, and then the, unfortunately, the 8th grade girls from Carson Middle School lost. So if you all receive a complaint about loud fan, it was probably me. So you can send them my way.
For Fritsch Elementary School, Mr. Brown would like to thank all of those who supported the PTA fundraiser, and also he'd like to report that we, they had a very successful week of respect, and the Safe School Professional organized daily themed activities, dress-up days, and classroom lessons about friendship and empathy related to anti-bullying.
For the high school...
It's you.
It's me. Yeah, I am, right? It's my magnetic personality. As I mentioned, homecoming is going on this week, and I had a few of the kids at the high school who are involved in homecoming raid my closets for sports gear, because apparently it's twin day and sports day, and so I just, public record, I have no more sporting jerseys. I'm sorry to report. Hopefully, some will make it back. I noticed on the daily announcements of the high school, Sierra Nevada College is having a fall admissions day, so to get some information about, you know, your next step, and you want to learn about Sierra Nevada College, October 12th, that's a Friday, and also November 2nd, you'll be, your opportunity to learn a little about Sierra Nevada College. My daughter is, like a lot of the seniors, is taking their ACT and SATs, and because of her busy schedule, and I know a lot of these kids are busy, one of her friends clued me in on, and Sue, you might be aware of them, Huntington Learning Center, they're a testing center that helps kids prepare for a variety of tests. But if you have a kid that's getting ready for a high-stakes test, probably something above MAP or SBAK. But anyway, I had a nice conversation with these folks about what they offer, what their approach is, how it works. Number one, it's pretty darn affordable, at least a lot more affordable than I thought it was going to be. Number two, their approach, I thought, was really solid. You know, they bring them in initially, whatever tests are taken, they have a Proctor practice test, then they break the test down for them, and just help these kids get through these tests, and they, they come short of guaranteeing an improved test score, but, you know, they say if the kids put in the work, that what they're seeing are these kids, like on the ACT, it's not uncommon for them to improve four, five, six points on an ACT test, which is pretty huge. Today, I was contacted by, and this goes beyond the high school, but contacted by NDEP, and I was going to reach out to Mr. Korinek. But schools throughout the nation are doing a variety of, a variety involvement, and we just heard about some of the environmental work that our kids are doing. But apparently, there's some big, pretty big programs out there to get these kids involved in, in the environment, water quality, and things like that. And they're having these kids get involved in not only water connection, water collection and analysis, but getting these kids involved in public speaking, and they're going to, you know, community board of supervisors meetings and things like that, and presenting their data and their results, and actually chipping in and helping with a lot of stuff that I do in my career, with, you know, formalized environmental assessments, and getting these kids involved early on. What a great learning opportunity for them. So anyway, I'm going to be learning more about this, Richard, and I'm going to be contacting Mark Korinek, and see if we can maybe get a, you know, get a meeting together first, and then do a presentation on maybe, you know, what this is all about, and see if it's something we can incorporate in our district. So anyway, I've taken up enough time, so that concludes my report.
So I just have one item. Today, I met with Carson High School senior, actually, who went to the elementary school I work at, and has kept in contact with this third-grade teacher, and he's excited to explore teaching as a career. He's very professional. He came in and talked to me. He's going to do some shadowing and teach a few lessons, and so I just, I think he represented Carson High really well, so I was proud of him, and I look forward to seeing what he does. And that concludes my report.
Stacy, you got two.
So just to kind of update you on NASB, or my travels, I went to the CUBE conference, which is the Urban School District's conference in Vegas, and that was really interesting. And then I went to a Clark County School Board meeting, which I'll tell you, I am so glad to be home. Their public comment is very interesting. And Brian, and Loretta, thank you for being here. I'll tell you other stories. And then we had our regular fall NASB meeting in Reno. And just to give you an update on that, our website is back up. The office is moving with the NIAA over to the renovated church by the Nugget.
By what? Isn't it by Victorian Square?
Yeah, by Victorian Square. It's on the backside of Victorian Square, which will be really nice, because then we have a conference room there, so we might be able to have conference, not big conferences, but we can have some meetings there, and still work with the NIAA to keep our rent very affordable, because we get internet, electricity, water, photocopying, so it's a really good deal for us. So the office will be closed the week of, the third week of October, because they're moving. The search committee for the executive director's position met during this meeting, and we've had 22 applicants and got it down to 13, and we're interviewing five of them. And that'll be October 22nd. Not sure yet how many are coming in, or how many we're doing by video conference, but we'll let you know. And we got people from all over the US for that application process. And then just to let you know, we have three committees that we know that we're going to have openings on, and that's our seat on the Board of Ed, which is now Dawn Miller. She wants to do it again, but that does make it an opening, so if somebody else is interested, let us know at the November meeting. The teachers' leaders council position is open, because Victoria Frankel from Washoe is not running again. So if that's something that interests you, let us know. And then the parental involvement one, which is me, which I'm finding out I just don't have enough time for, so if there's somebody out there, we're going to bring that up at the November meeting, too. And then we would just like to congratulate Mr. Walker. He was voted as our appointed representative to submit to the governor for the Nevada, from Nevada, for the educational committee to the state, so...
That's a surprise. Thank you.
Oh, you didn't hear about that?
No.
Well, congratulations!
What am I congratulating for?
You are accepted. There are... You were accepted. There are two applicants, and you won. So that doesn't mean that you'll get appointed. This was the first time we had a school board person on that commission, but it's a good place for you to be. Yeah. And then, next meeting, I'm going to have cards, or if you want to submit emails for Dottie's retirement. If you want to, I'm putting together like a big book with pictures and all kinds of messages from former school board members. So if you want to do a written note, I'll have paper next time, or you can just send me an email and let me know. And I think that does it for NASB. And then the newsletter will be coming out with my adventures at Cube, if you want to see what we learned there.
And I'll just make one comment for NASB, putting on the governance conference here a week or so ago. I think we all learned, Dawn was there, Joe, myself, Stacy. It's all good. And sorry, Lupe and Richard, that you weren't eligible, but we'll share it here soon. So, anyway, thank you. Agenda item number six, association reports. Brian, we got nothing. Okay, associations, no. Okay, public comment. It's a time for, if anyone in the audience wants to talk about anything that is not on the agenda related to schools, please feel free to just come forward. And seeing none. We'll go on to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is the progress update of school performance plans related to the Nevada School Performance Framework, NSPF, two-star rankings for Fremont Elementary School. For discussion only, Dr. Jennifer Ward DeJoseph. Take your time.
Good evening. Jennifer Ward DeJoseph, for the record. And with me tonight is my assistant principal and helper with everything right now, Ms. Cheryl Riquetta. And so we will be presenting, oh, and Mr. Chad Hicks. You're welcome. Okay. Well, there it is. Okay. So I provided you some handouts in your board packet. You have our star rating document from the NSPF. I also put in there a schedule that we look at and follow each day from Fremont that was staff-created. And then the last document that I included was a general understanding of S-Back statistics and how they are applied to our school rating. So I think I'm just going to jump in unless you have something to say. Okay, okay. All right. So tonight's presentation, we're going to focus on some celebrations, some concerns, and some of our commitments, all with a little bit of caution, and I'll be going over each of those as they pertain. So I'm hoping our formatting, it doesn't look like it took on our formatting when we sent it, so I'm hoping that they all play nice today. So first part is our celebrations. I really do believe that Fremont staff is the biggest celebration that we have here at Fremont, the power of our people, with the reminder that programs, policies, procedures, nothing happens without good people. And I think we have some of the best people who have come together to work with our students and to increase our success at Fremont. And so with that, I presented to the board last year, but it's a good reminder to say that the vision of our school is really to foster that lifelong learning and to create an environment in which our students can reach their maximum potential. And that means a whole lot of different things for a lot of different kids. And so what is maximum potential for some of our kids is maybe not well-defined by the state NSPF rating. And so we'll be getting into what we're doing for all of our kiddos. Through that, our mission is that community of learners with that high-quality student-centered, that learning-centered model of instruction, of providing individualized education focused on the social, emotional, and academic growth of our students, and looking at making sure that our classrooms and our school are a safe and supportive environment in which all that learning can happen. Part of that, all of this, actually, this mission was created by our staff and through our school improvement process. And that, it led to our guiding principles that we have for our adults in the building. And as you can see, they spell out ASPIRE. It's that accountability. And when we talk about our star rating, when we talk about the learner-centered model, when we talk about, it really lives with accountability, being student-centered, having that perseverance, which is a huge component of not only of our teachers, but including that for our students to persevere through some of their assessments and some of their challenges that they face. Having that integrity to do what's right by students each and every day, and accepting that responsibility to have excellence each and every day for our students. The Find a Way theme came out of our Halls and Walls. We call it the Halls and Walls Climate Committee. And so if you have not been to Fremont lately, we have taken the, maybe the institutional gray. We have taken all of the arts. So if you're familiar with Fremont, we had well over, I think, 100 pieces of artwork. Most of it was framed. We were able to find many, many, many of the owners, most of which were in their 20s or early 30s, and get it back to their original owners. The artists who did not get their work picked up, they were all donated to a local rest home, and they are being given as presents to the residents and hung up around the facility so that all the artwork, for as much as we could save, all of the framed artwork has been given and donated for those who did not pick it up. We did leave it in our building until early September. And so we put out another call for if you had an artist at Fremont, so that we were able to match the owners. But as you can see, we took that institutional gray that we did not love so much. And all the painting that you see up there is staff-created. 100% of it was staff-donated time. And we have done a kind of a travel through time. So we start from the ocean and work our way to a jet plane, and then our next round will be into space. So that's our theme. So Finding a Way, and we talk about that when teachers come and ask questions or students, we say, "Let's find a way. Let's find a way. Let's find a way to make that happen." Whether it be looking at mini-grants, or looking at behavior plans, or looking at assessments or SLGs through their evaluation system. Everything is about finding a way. So I think that that's a celebration, and it kind of goes into our star rating, which we're going to get into. One of the celebrations we have is that although we are still a two-star school, we had 39.5 points, the lowest value at the point of last year. We have gone up nine points in the star rating, and we're one and a half points away from a three-star school. That is a tremendous amount of growth, and we believe that our growth data was our greatest component of that. And that growth data included all students, as well as those yet to be proficient. So I think that was a big component of our star rating. Another celebration that you see here is that we have our student growth data, we went from eight points to 15 and a half. And you can see kind of here on the graph, that's for all students, and that's that trajectory. Based on the S-Back assessment, this is our 4th and our 5th grade students. So those students are currently, one grade is only in our school, and that's our 5th graders. So the students that represent for this upcoming year, there's only one group of kiddos, one group of 100 that will be represented for next year that were also included this year. So the growth data, that's the kind of caution that I throw out there, is to understand the growth data for all students includes only 4th and 5th grade students, only students who took the previous year assessment, and only students for that one year. When you're looking at it for next year, you get a whole new cohort. So trying to set goals and such on this particular data is difficult, because your groups of students change. Another set of opportunity, now this one is only looking at the students that are below proficient. And in this one, we have some other opportunities to look at growth. So for example, the student growth data on the blue graph, if you will, the student growth data that we had an increase, almost double of the amount of points on our star rating system. 50% of our students had higher typical growth. On the opportunity gap, 65% of the students who were not proficient in 3rd or 4th, when they tested last year as 4th or 5th graders, 65% had high or typical growth. Unfortunately, some of the kids who have really low proficiency scores in the lowest of the categories, it did not factor into this opportunity gap, because you have to be projected to be proficient within that three-year gap. So in order to be proficient, you have to be, you can't be on the lowest spectrum. So even though our students who scored the absolute lowest had high or above-high growth, they did not factor into the opportunity gap data. And so that's kind of, that's our caution with our celebration, is that although our lowest, some of our lowest students went from a low one to a higher one of proficiency, it wasn't enough to say that you're going to be proficient by the time you get to 6th grade. And so that's a component. It is also, the caution of it, I would say, is the three years proficient. Being three years proficient, that's a 6th grade student, and those kiddos go to middle school. So some of the benefit that we see of the hard work ends up happening maybe when they're in 6th grade, which we appreciate as being fellow colleagues of our middle school friends, and having been one myself. I appreciated the hard work of elementary students and having those kids be proficient by the time they get to 6th grade. But those are our celebrations. It is also another celebration that would say that a lot of our students, in looking at our data from the past, about 70% of our kindergartners, at least 70% of our kindergartners are below the 65th percentile when they come in to our school. And so to make that monumental growth by the time they get to 4th grade and to be proficient is quite something when over 50% of our kids are below the 40th percentile when they enter into kindergarten. So that gap score that they only take two grade levels in consideration for our NSPF is really huge when you consider kindergarten, and you look at the whole trajectory of our school. And so I think that's the caution with that celebration, if you will. The last celebration I have for tonight would be the academic achievement. It had the smaller of the growth. So we went from four points to 20 points, and that 20 points is out, or, sorry, four points to five points out of 25 points possible. And so to see that greatest growth in math, we had a group of students, in our 4th to 5th grade students, or our 3rd to 4th grade students, who went from, increased their proficiency by 13% from 3rd grade to 4th grade in mathematics. And that was the greatest growth of the district. So that's definitely a way to celebrate. Science was included this year where it was not last year. So the weight of math and reading was slightly impacted by the amount of science, the additional 100 students that score for science. Our 3rd graders from last year scored much better than the 3rd graders in the year prior. So we have a stronger 4th grade group that we currently have sitting in our rooms. Our 5th grade experienced good growth, but we kind of are looking at our 3rd grade that is currently in there and to realize that although they are projected to be stronger in reading than in math, they're projected below what our last year's 3rd grade was projected to for proficiency. So again, it's kind of looking at an assessment in a way that you're being judged by the data and realizing it's a different group of kids every single year, so they bring different kind of traits. An example is my next year's 3rd graders. Instead of having 100 of them, I have 57. So the weight that they carry individually is quite more, is very much more impactful than all the rest of the years. And we just have a weird anomaly that for this one class, every other class has 100 kids, and this one has 57. So that'll be a whole nother data point for next year's consideration. Going on to, are there any questions about celebrations? I'm just kind of blowing through this. No? Okay. Our concerns. So our concerns really have a connection to student attendance. Student attendance changed by definition. It used to be that half-day absences did not count, and now they do. So we did see a large increase of 5% to 10% of our students that have chronic absenteeism. A hard part of that would be the availability of doctor's appointments. It's hard to get an at 4:00 doctor's appointment. It's hard for staff, and it's hard for kiddos. So now it's not just, hey, can you only, you know, get them out at 2:00? Well, that's a full-day absence, according to the state. And so, yeah. Yeah. So if they miss more than like 30 minutes of the day, they're considered absent. Period.
And you can't get any kind of doctor's appointment in 30 minutes?
Exactly.
Yeah, or dentist, or anybody.
Yeah, pretty much. And so it's been difficult. We just had a case where we have a family that their kiddos missed 10 days already, and they've moved, but they're already in our chronic absenteeism count as of right now for the state definition. So no matter what intervention we could have tried, they're already chronically absent, because in 30 days, they missed 10. And that's 10% to realize that it's 10% of however many days you are enrolled past 10 days. So if you are enrolled 30 days and you miss three for strep throat, you are chronically absent. And that is part of our percentages. And so to realize that every new student that we get, if they're with us for more than 10 days, that data is in our attendance set. And so there's that that we can't control. Attendance is always something that we are working towards. We had a huge flu epidemic last year where our whole district had lots more absences. But chronic absenteeism, chronic absenteeism in 1 in 10 right now at Fremont is considered chronically absent. They miss more than 10% of their enrolled days at Fremont. So that is a bit of a challenge and a concern for us, and we have put some things into place for that. Our English acquisition for our 1st through 5th grades, these are kiddos that have taken at least one access test, we dropped a little bit from 57%, being on that trajectory towards proficiency within five years to 51%. So we lost two points for our star rating in that. We also, going back a little bit, we lost two points in our student attendance. So our student attendance and our English acquisition were the two areas in which we lost points. So we lost a total of four in those two areas. So this particular, you can see on this particular graph, it just looks at when these kids are projected to be proficient. And again, if that five-year mark hits, it's at the very end of 5th grade if they're a kiddo in kindergarten or middle school. So again, kind of looking at the correlation between English language proficiency and taking an English-based test on the S-Back, there's a disconnect of expecting these kids to be able to pass an assessment when they don't have the English proficiency necessarily. So those were our concerns. And so prior to our star rating, so back in May, our staff met, our school improvement team met, and we came up with our commitments for this year. So I like the fact that these are not reactionary to a star rating, that these are proactive, and they just happen to align with our star rating, because some parts you can just predict. So I think part of it is our excellent- So I think part of it is our excellent first-time instruction. So when we talk about lesson planning, when we talk about lesson design and assessment of learning, that a good quality first-time instruction makes it more difficult when you are absent, because what you missed was excellent. And that's hard to make up. There's no, there's just no making up for excellent first-time instruction. And so that is our push for this year, is looking, and that's driving Ms. Riquetta's in my walkthroughs, is that excellent first-time instruction. Looking at the next one is Power Hour, and that's one of the reasons why I gave you this schedule. One of our school improvement goals this year was looking at our populations, our sub-populations of special ed, struggling learners that get reading tutor, tutoring, and our second language students. A hundred percent of those students were pulled out of core content classes. So if I had an IEP and I needed to go to my special ed teacher, I might miss part of my science class and part of my math class, because the world doesn't stop for me, regardless of whether or not I think it does. They wouldn't stop, so I'd come back into the class, and now I have to catch up. So I'm already a struggling learner, and now I'm made to catch up. Or I miss out on the wrap-up of the lesson, or the self-assessment or the assessment within the lesson itself. And that was just the structure of a pull-out program for both our ELL population as well as our special ed population, those students who attend speech, those students who attend reading tutoring through our SFA program. All of that happened during, sometime during your day, which means that you left class and there was good, excellent instruction happening that you missed. So we created a Power Hour in which all students are receiving their own individualized plan. We believe all students can shift to the right, which means whatever your percentile is, you deserve to grow, and so that's the time we do it for all students. So we have an hour a day for each group of kiddos. So if I'm a fifth-grade student, all my peers are in Power Hour. I go to my special ed class, or I go to my ELL class. I'm not missing core content because the rest of my peers are doing exactly what I'm doing. Everybody's just getting what they need. So we really work on differentiating during that time for both math and reading support. Our students in second language are receiving their language acquisition support during that time. But we have reduced our, a hundred percent of our special populations of students being served in programs down to three percent missing core content. And the three percent that miss core content, it's because we have specialists like OT, PT, who just come in for the one day and they don't, they, there's just no way they can abide by that schedule. And so we've gone from a hundred percent to three percent. So that's a huge commitment of our staff. It's also a commitment of our staff to provide every student with what they need. This is a time for our gate students to do their challenge projects, our students who would like to increase a skill that they're personally working on. They do a lot of goal-setting. They do both reflection of their week or their month of their MIUs. They reflect on those. They can use their learning guides to guide something that I need to work on personally. They each individually can do this in their classrooms. So you can see that in our schedule, we have a Power Hour. For our first through our fifth grades, they're pulled out and everybody goes where they need to. Our kindergartens are all push-in, so our specialists go into kindergarten and visit those classrooms. But our speech is done through our Power Hour, our, everything is so that our students can have that excellent instruction and be part of a classroom environment. And it has, we've already seen a decrease of, oh, man, I gotta go to speech, I don't want to miss science. And so the negative repercussions of having to go to a special class and I miss out on the science experiment, or I, now I have to feel like I have to come back in and be behind, we've seen an increase of just that positivity of getting support where it's needed. And so I think that's important. That attention to attendance, we kind of captured our, without even realizing that this statistic was not anywhere near where we wanted it to be for our star rating, we just knew we wanted our students there more often. We started a book club. Our book read is Disrupting Poverty, and it's the five strategies. And one of our first one is the struggle with attendance, but the number-one thing of students who want to come to school is because somebody knows that they're missing or cares that they show up. And so our attendance, attention to attendance brought on our champions program, where every staff member, from our custodian, our school nurse, our cafeteria workers, we've all taken on kids that we champion, and we pay attention to their attendance. We send home a positive note. We have two communications per month with parents, and it could be a note home. We ask parents, do you want to be called? Do you want to be emailed? Do you want to be texted? How do you want to be communicated with? Because the last thing I want is my phone call to interrupt your job. So if you want to be texted, we have the Remind app. If you want to be emailed, we'll send an email. We'll send a note home. And so we keep track of every single student's communication of having just positive adult relationships and building that ability to have that safe and supportive environment, as well as doing this through our, our staff meetings, both for classified and certified staff. So all of our staff got the book last year, so we started it. Quite a few of our staff members have finished the whole thing, but we do our book talks and incorporate our activities. We are working with the Circles, local organization initiative. They're going to be coming and doing a poverty simulation with my staff on November 5th, so we're working on understanding and really working on our relationships. And so that's where our champions program and our family engagement component has come to play. And when you, when we were able to reflect on our previous commitments that we made in May, we get our star rating, and there just seemed to be an over, an overlap. And so what we felt by passion and our own self-reflection as a staff, what we felt was missing or needed in our building, will, the, the star rating will take care of itself, because we have put into place things for all students to grow, all students to share in their awesomeness, and being able to celebrate learning and to celebrate, whether it be your social, emotional, or academic growth. And to some of our students, our social and emotional has to be met before we get to academic. And so. That wraps it up. So clarifications, concerns, celebrations, or compliments? I just kept with the C, so.
Okay. Those are basic, basic questions.
Okay.
Okay. Do all of your teachers understand what the learner-centered model is?
I believe so.
So if I went down there, I could ask them. They would all be able to give me a clear definition of what the learner-centered model is.
Yeah, because all they'd have to do is tell you our vision or mission, and that is a learner-centered model wrapped up in a boat. So yes. And I think that they actually do that.
Okay, then, okay.
For sure.
Now, you're excellent for first-time instruction.
Mm-hmm.
Are you assuming that all students learn the same way at the same rate?
No, absolutely not. And that's one of the, the benefits of Power Hour, so you have the opportunity to approach things differently. So if I don't get it the first time you teach it to me, I have that opportunity to have a twist. So if I'm more of a visual learner, and in this particular lesson you taught it through reading, then maybe I have that opportunity with my teacher through Power Hour. I think an effective, high-quality first-time instruction, you're going to have well-planned out connections from previous learning. You're going to have varied points of entry into the lesson. You're also going to have dialogue and discourse. You're going to have that metacognition where your students are self-assessing and aware where, what they're learning, because that's what the learner-centered model is truly about, is when I go up to a student and I ask the kiddos, what are you learning? They have an answer, and it's actually what they're learning. And it's not, oh, I'm learning this book. No, I'm learning how to read. I'm learning how to find main idea. They are able to do that through their quality objectives and the, the ways of having our teachers approach it through multiple modalities, as well as putting that time and effort into planning.
Okay, is the Power Hour the extent of your intervention programs?
What do you mean?
Pardon?
Well, we do have the, we'll have a before-school program, so we have a drop-in and read that starts, that started earlier in our year, but we needed our kiddos to, to come to it if they needed reading intervention. So it's an invitation program. And then we'll be having our after-school program starting up in November.
Do you use learning guides as an intervention tool?
So learning guides can have many different forms. I kind of think of it as the check registry. Sometimes I use an app, sometimes I use a different format. Some of our students take the learning guide as they should and put it into their interactive notebooks, so they get a portion of the learning guide, depending on the time of the instruction. Our learning guides are utilized as posters or anchor charts. They're also incorporated in the objectives. I would not say it's just a handout to be thrown into a peachy, but a lot of our teachers are including it in their, like, family newsletters and keeping all the components of a learning guide, but putting it into usable, you know, format for kindergartners, or usable format for second language students.
Can I go back? Is it used as an intervention tool?
It is, because it's, that's where there's self-reflection, and they should be able to go back and say, what are you learning? What's the big picture? So how is your objective tied to what you're learning in, in your big picture?
Then how do you get the students? Is it weekly, daily, of the students who need intervention? Say you get to, at the end of a three-week period, using the learning guide, you're connecting with the, the teacher, the students, and the families. It connects everything, so when, when is the appropriate time for intervention?
So I think intervention happens immediately. If you wait till three weeks in, it's too late. Our use of formative data, we use Mastery Connect, and we use it a lot. We're, I think, one of the highest users in the district of Mastery Connect, and I think part of that is because our, our teachers and our staff have been asked to increase their use of Mastery Connect for the idea of having informative. So for an example, today, a student was out in the hall with their teacher, looking at their Mastery Connect, doing a self-reflection on their goal sheet, had their learning targets right there in, in front of them, and had to pick which area they were going to work on a little extra and whether or not, and their teacher was taking anecdotal notes to inform the Power Hour, so that she knows when she pulls a group back, what kids she's pulling back for this particular standard or that particular standard. And the students, this was third grade, own why they're coming back for that intervention. And that's the whole purpose of having a learning guide or a learner-centered model.
Let me go, any other questions from board, comments, concerns?
No concerns. First of all, thank you very much. I, I think your presentations are always well-thought-out and informative, and I have to go do some homework before and after, so thank you.
Anytime.
But I really, I really like this Power Hour concept. I think, it goes right along with what I've been saying for a long time, that we're, and rightly so, spending so much time collecting, gathering, assessing data, that, you know, any opportunity we have to add a few minutes of teaching back into the day has to be helpful. And by doing this to where nobody's missing, or very, very small percentage of students are missing excellent education, is exactly that. You know, we're maximizing our teaching day, which, you know, I think has to be a good thing. So thank you for that. And then I also, you, you mentioned it, but I wanted to plug it a little more. You know, when you got, when you say you have the highest growth in the district in math, and we look at the, the third to fourth-grade cohort, it was quite a bit higher. You were over thirteen percent, and the next closest in that cohort, in any cohort, was a, was four percent. So I mean, Fremont really did an exceptional job, you know, getting up to, to what I'll call the next level. And I mean, certainly there's more room to grow and more work to do, but that's, that's a phenomenal jump, so, so well done to you and all your staff.
Additional questions?
Just, just one. Congratulations, growth in four out of five, that's really good. Do you see any of that being attributed to those added early-release days that both you and Empire added last year?
Yes, I do. I think part of that additional professional learning time for our teachers, we're able to focus on good formative assessment, which is part of that planning cycle for effective instruction. The more you realize what students are unable to do through your own personal assessments, the more able you are to remedy those situations, which also brought to light the importance of needing a Power Hour. And having those, all your students being able to get that opportunity was just vital. And so in order to do that, those seven days were very useful to my, all of my teachers and our professional, our classified staff. That's where we started our book study of Help for Billy to understand behavior and that social-emotional component for our classified staff. And so to include them on our professional development was a huge win as well, and to be able to plan for that ahead of time. But also the use of our Mastery Connect contract that we created with Todd Theobald was just fantastic, because it wasn't about click here, click here, here's how you use the test, you know? It wasn't about their program, it was about good instruction leading to good quality information about students' learning. And Mastery Connect just being a gathering place to put it, and to be able to use it for students and for staff. And so that additional component, I can imagine being where we are today without having that opportunity, that additional time that we added from last year. So I do appreciate the board very much for having faith in that process, to understand that we actually needed that additional time, and time is of the essence, and that lost time, I think, we made up for it, and it shows in our scores.
And how many APTTs do you have?
I currently have five.
Okay, well, based on what you, you've said and what you're doing, you should be a four or five-star school next year.
Remember when I said there's cautions when using this assessment? Remember that that is the difficult part, is that every group is very unique. I do anticipate our fourth and our fifth-grade students doing, keeping that pattern that they have of high, their proficiency of our third-grade group was at thirty-five percent all unto itself from last year. So I anticipate our third and our, our current fourth and fifth-grade students to be strong this year. Our third-grade students, they're on, they're struggling a little bit, and so I would say that keeping due course will bring all students in the right direction. Whether or not it shows in an attendant, I mean, attendance, I can't, can't, you know, I can only control so much.
Proficiencies, it starts with proficiencies, and attendance, like you said, there's variables that you can't control. Proficiencies is, if that's taken care of, the rest usually takes care of itself. Anyway, I, I'm just gonna make that comment.
Yes. I'd like to be a five-star school.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? If not, thank you so very much. I enjoyed visiting your school and intend to do it again, here in a month or so.
Okay.
So, okay. Agenda number nine, progress update of school performance plans related to the Nevada School Performance Framework in SPF. Two-star ranking for Empire Elementary School. For discussion only, Susan?
While they're transitioning, I just want to say, I know the board had asked about teachers and noticed that both principals are bringing site staff to the board meeting tonight to, to be involved in the process.
Thank you all for your time out of, coming to our meetings.
And while everybody's leaving, I, I mentioned before during our, our workshop session, just thanking the thanking the administrators and the teachers, I mean, everybody's working really hard, so, you know, and, and there's a certain level of, I think you were here when I said that, Susan, that, that goes with all this. I mean, you know, it's inherent that the teachers, the site administrators, and the students, everybody's stressed out to a certain degree, but I want them to know from the board's perspective, from my perspective, that we really do appreciate everything everybody's doing. We know that the workday isn't ending at 3:30. I, I see lights on in all buildings way later than I'd like to see them on, but thanks for everything everybody's doing.
All right, Susan Squires for the record. Mr. President, members of the board, thank you for having us here tonight to share information about our school, Empire Elementary. And I have with me my assistant principal, Mike Paul, whom, without her, I'm not quite sure what our school would be like if it wasn't for Mike being part of our team, so. We want to take time today to share with you a little different view of our school. At the end of last school year, our staff decided that we really needed to move to a growth mindset, and we took on the slogan, motto, whatever, of the power of yet. I'm gonna play just a short little clip here for you. What button am I pushing, Ms. Renee?
We might have to go on this side, Mrs. Squires.
Oops. Well, I shut the whole thing off.
Sorry. That was a doodle. Sorry.
Oh, good, that was you.
That's a doodle.
Here we go.
Oops. We didn't have any video.
Oh, 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 sorry. One thing at a time, Mrs. Cortez.
Might be time to come in, IT.
Susan has a ch, ch, she could get up.
I do, I do.
And she would love to sing for you, so.
Oh, yeah.
I just, I was thinking, how did I get you? Oh, there, there you go. Yeah. Gotcha.
Good.
Yeah, but I was thinking I could do the wrong.
So this is CJ Lucky. He joined us on the very first day of school to do a Power of Yet concert for us at our school, and our students took on the slogan and motto of the power of yet as well. And we believe in this growth mindset. We believe that our kids may not be there yet, but they have the potential to get there. We've had many students in their lessons so far this year physically jump up out of their seats and yell, oh my gosh, that was the power of yet, I finally get it. And so we play CJ Lucky often, our teachers talk to our kids about not knowing things yet, about the growth mindset, about perseverance and the things that they need to do and the goals they need to set to get there. And so we believe in this, and we believe that this is one thing that's gonna help our school move forward. This is what the power of yet looks like at our school. Every one of our staff members has a Power of Yet t-shirt. We all wear them proudly, and I wanted you to see that this is Empire Elementary School. This is the staff that puts in all of their time and energies on a daily basis, because they believe in the power of yet for our kids. So moving forward then to a three-star school, we are gonna focus on the same things, celebrations, concerns, and commitments. Some of the celebrations from our star rating that we want you to know about, in the 2016-17 star rating, we scored 41 points, which was a two-star school. In this 2017-18 star rating, we also scored, scored 41 points. Our Read by Grade Three in 1617, we had 20.9% of our students, and in the 1718 school year at Read by Grade Three, we increased that to 31.3%. In the 2016-17 star rating, our student growth in math was 43%, and in the 1718, our student growth in math was 58%. In the 2016-17, the percentage of our EL students meeting their AGP was 53.2%, and in 1718, that percentage went up to 65.9%. And in the, the area of the star rating, for our second language learners, we received all 10 of 10 points, having 20% of our students exit the program last school year. So some of our concerns then come with academic achievement. We were able to increase our scores in all areas except for our academic achievement and chronic absenteeism. In the 2016-17 school year in math for the CRTs or the SBACK, 25.3% of our students were proficient, and then in 2017-18 for math also, 26.4% of our students were proficient. So that was a little bit of a decrease in our students, again, we look at, you know, different cohorts of students.
It's a little bit of an increase.
It was a little bit of an increase, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it was a little bit of an increase. And then in our 2016-17 for ELA, for SBACK, 29.7, and then the 1718 CRT was 30.6. So we didn't make the growth that we wanted to make, but we did make a small amount of growth. And then lastly, our other concern is chronic absenteeism. In 1617, we had 7.4% of our students chronically absent, but we doubled that number. And as Dr. Ward shared with you, the criteria for that changed a bit, but we do have a plan moving forward for our chronic absenteeism.
Just a, just a quick question, was that half-day aptis, or the, the definition of half-day being a full day's absent, was that in place last year, or is that new this year? It's new this year? So that number could go up for kids that have regular doctor's appointments?
Right.
That was one of the changes that Dr. Medina presented when we were going over our informational changes to the Nevada School Performance Framework.
Okay. Mm-hmm. So our commitments for our school, for this school year are, we really are, are trying to focus more on our academic achievement. We know our staff, we hang our hat on the fact that we are helping our kids make tremendous growth. But because some of our students are so far behind, we're helping them make the growth, we're not always closing the gap, and we are not getting them to proficiency in academic achievement. So we know that that's an area where we need to put forth a lot of our efforts, and so we're going to do that by focusing on improving our instruction. And this is not to say that the instruction that's happening at our school is not good. We believe that what is happening in our classes, classrooms is excellent. But when I take a look at our staff, I remember back to T4S days, I know there were pros and cons to T4S, but we focused on some things with T4S in the classroom and during those walkthroughs that was really good instruction, parts of lessons and parts of teaching that were just good teaching practices. And when we fell away from that, there was less, I felt there was less of a focus on it. We have, have had a lot of turnover at Empire and a lot of brand-new teachers in the third year that I, in my third year this year of being there. And so we are taking time now to go back and focus on some of those really good teaching practices and really focusing on instruction. So for our early-release days this school year, that is what we're focusing on. Yesterday, when we had our early-release day, we did a teacher's need assessment, and we had them assess themselves in different areas where they thought that they needed some extra support in instruction, anything from questioning to active engagement. And we are gonna take that information from that needs assessment and provide differentiated PD for them between myself, Mrs. Paul, my STEM coach, and our ELAIS are gonna, going to take a look at that needs assessment and provide some differentiated PD for our teachers. Another thing, area where we're going to commit is continuous data analysis through our PLCs. So we are fairly new to using Mastery Connect. We have spent quite a bit of time with our teachers, helping them to understand the purpose of Mastery Connect. As Dr. Ward stated, we, with her school, we are, also are one of the schools that have one of the highest numbers of information or data being put into Mastery Connect. So our teachers are using it, they're putting information, formative assessment data into it, and we are working now through our PLCs to make our PLCs true PLCs, looking at data, talking about kids. Our, our teachers, for their NEPF, for their student learning goals, their NEPF, one of the things we asked them to do was to focus on specific students. We have a Power Hour similar to what they do at Fremont, we call it SLG time, and we are tying that to our teachers' SLGs or student learning goals, and they have chosen, we want them to have students' names and faces in front of them every time they are doing planning for, for anything, whether it's whole-class instruction, whether it's their intervention time, and we use that SLG time like the Power Hour to differentiate and do interventions for students. So we are gonna be using our data analysis through our PLCs and Mastery Connect to really focus on those kids that we're targeting for our SLGs, and then being able to provide interventions and differentiated instruction for the other students in our classrooms. We use the instructional consultation model at our school for interventions as well, and we are, are going to continue to use that. Our entire team is going through the IC training this school year, so that they are, understand the process, and so that all of our team members can use it to help teachers better plan interventions for their kids. Everything we use at our school are ESSA-based programs, and we also are focusing on shared leadership at our school, because I believe that that is important for our, everyone in our school to have a leadership opportunity. So I was able to attend the ESSA conference in Las Vegas a couple of weeks ago, and this I brought back from that conference, and this fits our school absolutely perfectly. These were the five ingredients for school improvement that were discussed at that conference, one being a coherent instructional guidance system where teachers are clear about what they are teaching and intervening when students aren't learning, and that is what we are doing at our PLCs through Mastery Connect. An ongoing development of staff using the NEPF system to assist teachers rather than to ding them, and so we work really hard on our walkthroughs. We average between 10 and 18 walkthroughs into every stu, or every teacher's classroom last school year, so that we had a great picture of what was happening in their classrooms, so that we could assist them in the areas they needed to be assisted, rather than just popping up their eval at the end of the year and saying you weren't effective. Thirdly, a student-centered learning climate, which would include a positive learning environment, students and teachers that feel supported, and a positive culture for students and staff. We're doing that through our SEL, school-wide, through the power of yet. We still reach for the stars in everything we do, especially in reading, and so we're hoping to provide that for our staff and our students as well. And then again, shared leadership with a common vision and collaborating, collaborative problem-solving. We have one teacher from every area of our school, every grade level and every, every special, whether it's PE or ESL or Special Ed on our school improvement team, and we meet once a month. And then we continue to work on strong parent, community, and school ties through our parent involvement facilitator and teaching opportunities for our parents on a monthly basis. We do snacks and stories, and we do math and munchies once a month for our, for our parents to come in and learn how to work with math with their students and read with their students as well. So what we want to do is to build capacity for our teachers to meet students' needs, and how we're going to do that is to increase teachers' capacity in instruction, as I said before. We, we are going to work in the area of questioning. We want our teachers to be asking questions so that our students truly understand what the essential questions are of the lessons, and being able to ask questions of our students and then not answer them themselves. We did a walkthrough, unfortunately, we weren't able to get into classrooms as much as we wanted to last week, but we tallied 122 questions asked of our teachers last week. 107 of those questions were answered by students, 15 of them were answered by the teachers, and we were really happy with that. Our teachers understand wait time, our teachers understand having our students talk to each other about their answers before asking them to respond. So we feel pretty good about that. And then we're gonna work with our teachers on the complexity of the tasks that they are giving their students, especially during their SLG time, understanding that students need to have productive struggle. Our teachers, and we've mentioned this before, love our teacher, our students dumb sometimes because they love them so much, they hate to see them struggle, and so we are working with them on allowing productive struggle to happen in their classrooms. And we want to be able to create the conditions in our school to make, to meet students' needs. We already address students' needs as far as taking care of food, we have breakfast in the classroom, we have 100% free and reduced lunch, we provide clothing for them, we have a clothing closet for them, we provide all of their supplies. One area that we are struggling in, that we are hyper-focused on this year, is the area of behaviors. We have, this has been a difficult start to our school year, lots of behaviors in our school building that we have never seen before, from self-harm to, I mean, Mike, Mike has been kicked and punched and bit more times than I have counted in my school career in this first six, seven weeks of school. And so we have some behaviors that we are really struggling as an administrative staff to deal with. Our teachers are, are struggling to the point of daily tears because of some of the behavior struggles that we are witnessing in our school building this year.
Do you have, excuse me, you have a social worker there, or?
We do have a social worker. We have a part-time counselor who's with us two days, two and a half days a week. Our social worker is a godsend, she's able to spend a lot of time, she'll do anything we ask her to do, she'll spend time with students in any capacity. She does her best to provide parents with resources in the community. Our parents aren't always open to that, and we can't force them to be open to taking advantage of these resources. So we do use our counselor the two days that she's there, she teaches SEL, she teaches small groups, but two days is difficult. She often gets something started with a student, and then she's not seen again for another and then she's not seen again for another, you know, week's time before she's able to work with those students again and really teaching them some strategies to deal with. So, that's an area we're really struggling in this year.
So, going forward, just a full-time elementary school counselor would be probably needed?
It would be needed. Yes. I mean, we are, we are so very thankful for Dory Draper and the work that she does at our school two and a half days that she is there. We breathe a little bit of a sigh of relief on the days that she is there because now we have one more person. Today, we probably spent more money, just in today alone, we had both administrators, NRS, our social worker, spent an entire day with one student.
Do you have any idea what's causing this increase?
I mean, I know we're not the only school, you know. I, I'm just reporting that out for us because Mike and I are struggling. I know that, and just being positive and remaining positive for our teachers and for the other kids that are in some of these classes, you know.
And one of the things I think about, and I try to talk about with teachers sometimes is that, and this is the big thing that people who make policy don't always understand, is that you could focus on student achievement, but you have an explosive behavior in your school, in a classroom, and that could shut down two classrooms or three classrooms because classes have to be evacuated and teachers are assisting. And, and I think that, for whatever reason, this youngest generation coming up, every year, we're getting more and more explosive behaviors. And the sad thing is, those kids can't help it. They didn't do that to themselves. And so, our job is to try to fill those holes and also move the other kids forward. And it's almost an impossible job, even if you had 10 people in there, all 10 would probably be working with those kids. And so, I think that, you know, I get a lot of feedback from a lot of teachers. I hear great things about you as a principal and your school, and so, I know you're doing good things. And just remember, you're doing the right thing for kids, and the scores eventually are going to catch up. But I mean, our job is not to give tests. Our job is to educate children.
Yes, yes. We truly, we truly believe that at our school. And on that note, our school has been accepted to two different STEM opportunities this school year, both through the governor's office. We have a, one team that consists of one teacher from every grade level and one team, which is a totally different program. I apologize, I don't have it right here. That's our STEM coach and two fifth-grade teachers. It was for fifth-grade teachers only. I mean, we're really excited about that because we are one of only 13 teams that were chosen in the state of Nevada to be part of these teams. So, that's really been exciting for our school. But I'm saying that to say this, they asked our team, if you had to choose a holiday that was your school, what would you choose? And our team chose Thanksgiving because, because Thanksgiving is a very, very important holiday. But by the time Thanksgiving starts to roll around, Christmas has overtaken it in the stores and on the TV, and it does not get what it deserves to have. And that's why Empire is Thanksgiving, because we have decided that we get overshadowed, the good things we are doing get overshadowed by Christmas, but we are not going to let that happen, and we are going to stand up as Thanksgiving and be proud to be Thanksgiving because all of us that work at Empire choose to be there and believe very much in our students. And that's why we believe in the power of yet, because we know indeed that our kids will get there. They just are not there yet. So, clarifications, concerns, celebrations, compliments?
Well, I, you know, I think going forward, you've got a tremendous task, but yet is a good deal. We're not there yet. Now, Chad, is he, is he working with your, your team out there as far as going forward with learning guides, connecting students, teachers, families, and getting that, that solid connection? And all your teachers know what the Learner Center model is and, you know, just going forward?
Yep. All of our teachers know what the Learner Center model is. We are very much believe in it and the growth mindset. As far as the learning guides, our teachers use them in their classrooms so many different ways. I'd love for you to be able to see the different ways that they use them. We use them in, what did Jen call them? I can't even think. Interactive notebooks, thank you very much. Our teachers use them for our kids to set goals. Our kids have goal journals. They write their goals in their journals and review them and reflect on them. They go home to parents.
Okay, the, the interventions that come about as a result of learning guides and the self-assessments. You said you had instructional things for teachers, but do you have, what's the direct involvement with the kids for intervention?
I'm sorry, can you clarify?
Yeah. I've got a struggling kid that need, based upon the learning guide, you know, needs some help. What direct help do you give to the kid?
Okay. We, well, a couple of things that we do. We have a reading interventionist. So, she helps with our K through three students and does direct intervention with them in English Language Arts. We also have a math interventionist that does the same type of thing with math, only she works K through five. Besides our SLG time, that's when our teachers do their direct interventions. That's when our students get pulled. We have the same model that Fremont has. All of our students are in the classroom 100% of the time, except for our SLG time. That's the only time they are allowed to be pulled. So, they are getting instruction with use of the learning guides in the classroom, and then intervention is done either in the classroom or pulled by Special Ed, ESL, our interventionists. I'm sorry.
Tutors.
Our tutors, our reading tutors.
ESL.
Do you have after-school programs?
We do have, we do have an after-school program. It's our X Factor program. Yep, through the 21st Century Grant, we do have a morning homework program as well, where our kids are, it's by invitation only, but our students come with help in any homework and then in reading as well.
I'll give you a compliment. I just, I know that there, in a lot of ways, the deck feels like it's stacked against you, and you guys keep plugging away, and you're positive. This has been a really positive presentation, and I think that also the fact that you maintained, you didn't get the growth you wanted last year, but you didn't fall behind.
We didn't. And, you know, if we would have just gotten those darn absenteeism points.
Susan, you're going to do it. I know it. So, anyway, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for being positive on behalf of our students. Keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
If I could just comment, Chad Hicks, for the record, I, both of these schools, when you look at their growth, the growth percentile, student growth overall, they're heavily impacted schools, but both schools scored in typical or in close to high growth. So, what that means, that SGP, each student has an SGP, and they rank order all the students. So, each of them, that, they're moving it up. So, that, that's great. The closing the achievement gap part, that growth, what happens there, they're so, the proficiency level, as Mrs. Ward was saying, is so low that they're not making that growth for that three-year trend. But that's very impressive to see all students in typical or high growth and not in low growth. So, that's, that's hats off. That's wonderful.
And I think the 10 and, out of 10 in English Language is just incredible going up from, you know, you went from an eight to a 10, which is really good. So, definite kudos there.
Thank you. Our staff was very, very excited about that. Very excited.
And I'll ask you the same questions I asked Mrs. Ward. Did you think that your extra early release days helped?
You know, I, I really do think that they helped. We focused our early release days last year strictly on writing. We had no writing program. Very little writing was even being taught in our classrooms. Our teachers took this on. They created a writing program they believed in. They created all of the rubrics. They did cross-grade level, grade level, you know, up, above, you know what I'm talking about, below, above grade level. They collaborated tremendously. And when we were finished, they were so excited about the writing that was being produced. And we know that SBAK has a heavy, is heavy, heavy on writing. Our teachers at the end of the year said, those teachers that had been teaching third, fourth, and fifth grade for quite some time, said they didn't think their kids were going to stop. They had never seen them take so much time writing. And so, we continue that in our building. We continue that work and that grade-level collaboration. And we know that's going to be huge for our SBAK eventually, as our students become more proficient, being able to write out what they are thinking. Then, that's going to make a difference in SBAK. So, I'm thankful for those days, and I, I gotta give kudos to my staff for the hard work that they put into all of those days in creating a writing program that, that it's, they have ownership of, and they are, they are continuing it this year. So.
Can I add something to that?
Yeah.
Push your button. I pushed my button. Mike Paul, for the record, just about the writing program. Last year, when we first started talking about writing, we asked teachers, what do you expect? And in third, fourth, and fifth grade, they were like, we want our sentences to start with capital letters and end with periods. And as a former fifth-grade teacher, I was twitching in my seat because I'm like, that's, that's not okay. And then, by December, they were like, we want five-paragraph essays. We want solid openings with topic paragraphs. We want supporting details. We want transition words in there. And it was amazing to see the growth, not only of our kids, but of our staff, of their expectations from the beginning of the school year to December, and then from December to the time SBAK came around. It was exciting to see. And although I didn't look at them, just the amount of paper that I got to shred this year, we're at the end of SBAK because of the planning that the kids did for, for their writing portions, was exciting. I was, as I'm shredding, I'm like, ooh, there goes another flow map. Ooh, there goes another flow map. It was just exciting to see how the kids had taken those things that we've been teaching them and incorporated it into their, their assessments. And it became a part of who they were, which is what we want to see. So, our staff grew a lot, but our kids grew a lot too.
And I just want to add to that. I have a second-grade teacher who came to me this week with her walkthrough form. She wanted to talk about it, and she said, when you came in, my students were writing their second paragraph of their five-paragraph essay. And she said, I know they're second graders, but they're going to write a five-paragraph essay. And I was like, good for you.
I personally couldn't agree with you more. Writing, clarity of thought brings all of the standards and what's, what's including the standards together. And without that, we're not going much farther. But with the writing, we have an opportunity to go way beyond. So.
Okay.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for your presentations.
Thank you so much.
And we'll be out to say hello again.
Now that, now that we've had, I'm thinking we've had all the elementary schools, because I think I missed the first two.
Nope.
Oh, we haven't had Mark Twain and Bray. Okay, okay. I was just checking because I missed a meeting.
Artificial intelligence AI in the Carson City School District and in the future of K-12 education. Let me just start this off. I know we're going to have Raymond and Leanne come up here. They've got a great presentation. But I just got a whole of a copy of The Nevada Lawyer this, this month. Okay, and their whole dedication is to AI and what it, the implications for the legal profession is pretty significant. But just some quotes from their editor. This month's issue of The Nevada Lawyer examines a technological trend that may end up becoming one of the most profound developments of this century, the science of artificial intelligence. They go on, and it all comes about from a report that started in June 26th of 2018, just a couple of months ago, from the GAO. In a prepared statement entitled Artificial Intelligence: Emerging Opportunities, Challenges, and Implications of Policy and Research, a number of the subcommittees in the House of Representatives have called for information on artificial intelligence. What they define, you know, what constitutes artificial intelligence? And it says, as the GAO statement indicates, there is no single definition of AI, but broadly, the term indicates computer programming capable of functioning near, at, or above human capacity. And it goes on, and there's one more thing, and this is all in, but this whole thing is going there. And I think Mike Pavilakis is now going to join us in AI going forward. There's some significant ramifications in the legal profession, but it says, AI, at its core, describes the ability of a machine to simulate intelligent behavior. Such behavior can include decision-making, language translation, speech recognition, data solution, pattern recognition, and problem solving. The reason this is important, it's here, we're going, you know, there's challenges, there's opportunities, but you as a board, and I'm, sooner, going to probably have to be making some policy decisions in this area, especially how it can help students learn. So, with that, Raymond and Leanne, have a good time here.
Raymond Maderas, for the record. Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. We are here today to speak on the exciting topic of artificial intelligence. As you heard Mr. Swarzick's story, it's, it's out there. It's, it's evolving. And just today, I actually read a story about Amazon in a, in their store that they just launched called Amazon Go. It's, there is no cash registers or cash register folks taking money. Customers simply walk into the store, scan their smartphone, grab their groceries off the shelf, and walk out. It charges them on their way out. So, it's, it's completely, completely AI-driven, and it's, it's, it's interesting because it, it's, it really could be the, the future of retail. Anyways, I digress. So, AI technology is, is, is really in its infancy. It continues to scale, evolve, and, and mature. And with that, we really need to, to take into consideration a few, a few things as we progress through this presentation. So, I'm going to advance the slide here, and you guys should have a copy of the slides as well and some of the supporting documentation. All right, so the, so the first thing I would like the board to consider is data privacy concerns. Much of AI technology is built for consumer consumption at this point. It is not really adapted for education in a lot of ways. So, with that, the engineers have not really designed it around the, the federal laws that we need to consider when we're putting things into our classrooms, and that being COPA, FERPA, and SIPA, which are all data privacy laws at the federal level that we're obligated to follow. The second item, fiscal feasibility. There's obviously, with emerging technology, there's a, there's a premium cost associated with that technology. So, my anticipation is as market barriers drop and it becomes, you know, and competition increases in the AI field, that my anticipation is that the cost of AI, AI platforms will decrease over time, as with all technology, it generally does. Let me go on to the third item here. So, the third thing I would like the board to consider is that AI is, is not going to be a replacement for talented educators. I would consider it an enhancement, the ability for them to provide maybe a, a hyper-personalized learning opportunity for our students, and maybe it might replace Mike, according to the, Mr. Swarzick's comments. But, but that's something else I wanted the board to be, to be aware of, is that it's, it's not going to be a replacement for educators by any means. Definitely an enhancement and maybe a, an efficiency creator and a task automator. And then, the last thing is moving forward with, you know, AI in mind and, and its capabilities is going to be is going to be keeping our learning goals, our district goals in mind and making sure that we put this in place in, in a thoughtful and responsible way. So, you know, we're, we're in align with, with district goals. And one of my fears is that, you know, we're going to put this, the technology, this new shiny technology in, in place and, and it ends up not being effective. And so just, just keeping that in mind, that we're thoughtful in the way we implement it and that the intent and the purpose of it is, is well thought out and planned. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to, to Dr. Morris and she's going to continue on with the presentation.
Thank you, Raymond. Mr. President, trustees, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We're going to start out with kind of a global view of artificial intelligence. And I just pressed the wrong button. Okay. I want to talk about just technologies in general. So this slide talks about the different industrial revolutions. We are moving into what is now considered the fourth industrial revolution, building on all the automation and computer technologies that were part of the third industrial revolution. But now it's kind of the blurring of the lines with digital, biological, physical fears. You know, what does that actually look like? And so Mr. Swarzick gave a very good definition of AI. I have another one here that's very simple, but machines that can perform tasks that are characteristics, characteristic of human intelligence. And usually we're looking at things that are mundane, you know, difficult, or sometimes things that are, just take a lot of time for humans and the, the machines can do them much quicker. In your board packet, there was an article about AI is here. And so all of the things that are listed in this chart here, there are some specific examples in our world impacting all of those different areas of our economy, local and global. And the quote that I have on this slide, I, I've had this quote in my email signature for the school district, probably for about the last five years. And I think it's really becoming, you know, something that we really need to think about. Of course, we want our students to be able to be the best readers and writers, but it's really important for them to be able to learn, you know, unlearn and relearn things that we don't even know, some of the things that they're going to have to be able to know. So as long as they're critical thinkers and problem solvers, they'll be able to do those things. And so I wanted to give you some examples of artificial intelligence that you might be familiar with. Clear back in 1997, so we're looking at about 20 years ago, IBM's Deep Blue was the first supercomputer to beat a, a human person playing chess. IBM's Watson computer, some of you may remember watching that on Jeopardy when the Watson beat Ken Jennings and a, a couple of the other, you know, Jeopardy players. And now we think about, you know, the driverless prototype car. There's definitely improvements with that, but you know, it's not quite there yet. We don't see too many of those on, on our roads. But then I also just wanted to fast forward 20 years from IBM's Deep Blue supercomputer. I think it's really fascinating that Google's Alpha Zero, that computer, all it was given was the directions of how to play chess. And within four hours, it, using the algorithms that it knew, it was able to beat a human within that four hour period. So that shows you how much the technology has advanced in that 20-year period for, for artificial intelligence. So then we think about things that are out there that might be impacting our own lives, recommendations and personalizations of user experiences. If you are a shopper on Amazon, Amazon's been around for 21 years as well. And of course, it's always suggesting things that you might want to buy. And Google, once again, it's been around for 20 years. It will suggest things that you, you know, that you might want to look at as well. Netflix 2002, you might have playlists that are suggested for you. Facebook, of course, all of the personal assistants that are out there, Apple Siri, Amazon Echo using Alexa. There's, there's other things that are, that are out there that some of us use in our daily lives all the time. I'm going to come back to Amazon's Echo in, in a minute here as it relates to education. And then Google Translate is a phenomenal tool. Microsoft has a translator now. There's all sorts of tools and, you know, resources that are out there for us to use. And it was interesting as I was listening to all of our information tonight with our presentations from Fremont and Empire about data. And of course, it's all about our student data and that's what artificial intelligence is, is built on, is big data. Machines learning what that data is to be able to use those algorithms to do what we tell it to do. And so the idea of data science is really becoming an important area as well. But what really takes it to the next level is that deep learning that the technology can, can use. It's the neural networks now that are being actually programmed into those so that the, the technology itself is actually thinking about what is it, when you think about the driverless cars, does it need to stop? Does it need to turn? You know, how does it actually know how to do those things? And I'm sure you've heard of Internet of Things, all of the different things that we have in our daily lives, from home security systems to appliances that, you know, the refrigerator that can tell us, oh, you're out of milk and orange juice, you know, you need to go to the store. All of those kinds of things are, you know, impacting our lives. And of course, the sensors and detectors, many people wear Fitbits or some kind of a, a device that will help them monitor their health, how, you know, how many hours did you sleep? All of those kinds of things. So then how does that all impact K-12 education? Well, as Raymond mentioned, we simply cannot drop some of the consumer devices into our classrooms because of the, the data privacy with our students' information. And the idea that we would, you know, we obviously always want positive outcomes with any technology that we add to our schools and that needs to be done very cautiously and thoughtfully. The most important question is, how do we use the power of AI to personalize learning for every student? And so tying it into our strategic plan, goal one curriculum that matters about personalizing our learning, that is definitely where, you know, we want to go and be able to help our students with that personalization. So consumer virtual assistance, as I had mentioned before, I wanted to come back to the Amazon Echo. So the student and safety privacy concerns, first of all, it's, it's wide open to, you know, it circumvents any school filtering, firewalls, things like that. So that's why that technology is not really where we need it to be for our classrooms. But I did want to give you an example. St. Louis University, just this fall, put 2,300 of the Echo dots in all of their student living spaces. But what they did is they programmed them with the 100 most frequently asked questions by students, you know, things like, you know, where's the student union? Where, where can I get, you know, help with this? And so it wasn't tied to any one Amazon account and it was, it was programmed so that it would not remember what was being asked. I mean, if the same question was asked 400 times, I mean, it didn't really matter because it only knew the answers to the 100 questions that it was programmed. But the path to effectively using AI education, there, there are three types of data that we are used to in K-12 education, performance, attendance and behavior data. But really where AI comes in is that affective piece, that social and emotional learning, being able to, to tap into what are the students thinking or feeling that day and how does that impact their learning? One thing that we are currently doing right now, we are working on the new computer science standards were just adopted by the state. And so our technology teachers in the district are working on unwrapping those standards and getting those implemented into our classrooms. In one of the core concepts of our Nevada computer science standards is the data and analysis and the sub-concept is called inference and models. So that is already a part of some of the things that we are beginning to teach, which includes data science, as I had mentioned before. So that's where we're at with that. So there is a call to action out right now in the education world. It's more at the higher ed level. Professor Rose Lukin out of the University College London, she is definitely a guru in this area as far as AI in education. And so she has kind of coined the term with the use of data. Data is the new oil. It feeds AI to help us build smart tech, technology. However, just like oil, data is crude until it is refined and well-designed. So that's where we're not quite there yet. Actually, we have a long, quite a long way to go as we think about that, but I, I thought that was a really good analogy. But the idea of the possibility of learning, of course, the personalized, flexible, inclusive and, you know, hoping that our, you know, to help our students even be more engaged than they are. So if we think about what that AI in education call to action is, there are three different models that it really focuses on. The pedagogical model, of course, is what are the, you know, how are the teachers teaching and what does that pedagogy look like? And I'll talk in a minute about the ITS, this intelligent tutoring system, because that is something that there are bits and pieces of that out there already. And then the domain model, just knowing, of course, our teachers knowing the content that they're teaching. But then when we get into the learner model, and it certainly could be, you know, learner-centered model for our district, back to that affective, social, emotional, metacognitive aspects of, of learning. You know, we're not there yet where, you know, every kid comes to school with some kind of a sensor device, whether it's a Fitbit or something like that on, to be able to, you know, monitor that. But, you know, who knows someday that, that might be, of course, where we're at. And I just put this slide in because I thought it was important, one, that you knew where the research came for this presentation, but also if you were interested in learning more about this area. The Partnership for 21st Century Skills, if you're not familiar with that, and the Clayton Christensen Institute are two great education organizations and think tanks that are out there to help in this area. Another organization, COSIN, the Consortium for School Networking, had put together a great report on artificial intelligence. Raymond and I were in a, at a conference in February sponsored by COSIN. And so they did some, they presented some research on this back then. And then the other one, Getting Smart, Tom Vander Ark is another, his company called Getting Smart is another great think tank organization that is doing a lot of work in this area. So now how is AI, how can it actually be an intelligent assistant to teachers? So if we look at all of these things, the real power of this is really to be able to give more time to the teachers to work with students. What can we do with this technology that can automate things, automate grading systems, support teachers by providing that targeted customized feedback? Chatbots are something that are actually pretty prevalent in a lot of areas now. And that is one of the technologies that they're working on is how could that provide that targeted customized, customized feedback for our students? And just to think about many, I, I was thinking of some examples personally. I know some of the car dealerships here in town, if you go on their website and you're thinking about getting a service for your car, up pops a window. And I think, you know, a lot of people may think that that's actually a person, but that's an example of a chatbot. It has, it is programmed with certain answers to general questions that will, people will ask. And then if you ask a question, it doesn't know, then it'll say, you know, somebody will be in touch with you, even though it's not a real person. And so that was, that, that would be just an example that we might be able to relate to. And then AR and VR, augmented reality and virtual reality. I'll talk about some examples with that in just a minute. And so back to this intelligent tutoring system, you know, what are the kinds of systems that we will have in place at some point to help our teachers really be able to, to help our, our students? And, you know, we have, we, of course, in education, we love acronyms. Learning Experience Platform is another acronym that is out there specifically for what is that personalized learning experience for each student? And these are some of the areas where it would, I feel that it would really tie back into our strategic plan, goal one, exceptional staff. How can we help our teachers and like I said before, give them more time to help our students? And so I wanted to include VR and, and AR in this specifically because the idea of having something that could be adaptive to the students, it's not just a keystroke or the click of a mouse or the touch of a pad. It's, you know, it's eye tracking or voice recognition or things like that. And so that's another way that this is going to be able to help us. The multi-dimensional performance to create personalized pathways, coming back to that personalization of the learning and measuring the learning experience in real time. We have systems in place right now where we are measuring the learning, but sometimes it's definitely not in real time. And what does that look like? If it is a student speaking into, you know, a microphone or looking into a camera and being able to, you know, track their learning that way. So different artificial reality tools, if you will, kind of combining them together. We've been able to have Google expeditions in our district. Last year, two of our elementary schools had that experience where the virtual reality, the goggles came and the students were able to experience places that they may not have been ever able to travel to. They could put those VR goggles on and experience, you know, going to the Empire State Building or, you know, traveling around the world to different locations that Google has done an amazing job of putting those expeditions together. And then another example, back to our IBM Watson computer that I mentioned earlier with Jeopardy. The IBM's foundation has put together what is called Teacher Advisor and they're using the artificial intelligence technology with Watson. And it's free lesson planning and instructional guidance for teachers, specifically now it is for K-8 math instruction. And I have a couple of our STEM coaches at our elementary schools looking into this now. And Sarah Lop singer, who was here earlier this evening, she has a couple of our middle school math teachers looking in to see if this is something that is, you know, a viable resource that would enhance and supplement our math curriculum that has just been adopted. And then another example that, once again, we've got a lot of things out there that are kind of in the works for how AI is being tested out there in the education environment. But the idea, this one, the University of Pittsburgh College of Education, they have sent some of their best professors and student teachers out into classrooms, hundreds of hours of observation to actually be able to gather the information. And this particular study was about authentic questions. What, what is an authentic question? Because right now computers, if we ask it yes or no questions, of course, that would be easy for them to answer. But an authentic question could have any, you know, a varied number of answers. And so to be able to mimic what that might be and, you know, that, that's just one little piece of this that's out there that's trying to recognize those speech patterns and how the, the machine can actually be programmed. And then this is definitely a, a Big Brother-ish kind of an idea in China where they have cameras in classrooms and, you know, to be able, you know, are you sleeping? You know, what are you thinking? And then all of this data is then recorded and in real time, actually on a dashboard where the teacher can go back and look or, you know, in real time, look at how the, the students are thinking or feeling for that day. I know the teachers, when I was reading this article, the teachers weren't that excited about having the cameras in there too, because they were, they were concerned about what the data, you know, where all the data was going as well, not just the students' information on the dashboard. We definitely have a lot of data systems in our school district currently. Once again, performance, attendance and behavior data is really what we have. But if you think about Infinite Campus as our student information system, there's a lot of information in there. Mastery Connect, which has been mentioned many times this evening, assessment data of learning and for learning, our elevation program for our ELL students, Google Classroom. The majority of our classrooms, grades three through 12 now are The majority of our classrooms, grades three through 12 now, are using Google Classroom as a workflow system for, you know, submitting assignments and giving feedback in that capacity. TurnItIn is a plagiarism detection program that we have for our secondary students, and that, of course, is natural language, looking at the information that's being typed in, primarily for plagiarism. And then GoGuardian, which I'll get into more in just a second, is our program that we use for the Chromebook management, so the teachers can better manage what the students are doing so that they're not off-task using their Chromebooks in their classrooms. And of course, all of these things are all accessible on our Chromebooks for, for our students. So the idea of, once again, another acronym, the Safety Management Platforms, as I mentioned before, GoGuardian is what we use. There are other examples that are out there. But using this natural language processing to really see what's going on with, it can be used as a real-time behavioral monitoring system, but it has, it has proven effective with the idea of, you know, self-harm. It does, it's programmed to pick up on that kind of language in, in addition to, of course, inappropriate language or inappropriate material that is, that it, that it could find. So the ethical concerns about these kind of programs are, of course, making sure that the, that the information that is being collected is kept safe and, and private, protecting the students' privacy. But as Raymond had mentioned before, you know, I, I don't see this, hopefully, in, in my lifetime, we're not going to see, you know, a lot of the positions and professions being replaced by artificial intelligence. Many will, but I like this graphic that I found. Anything that can be, will, you know, will be, and if it isn't, then it even becomes more valuable. And that's where our teachers really come into place. The experience, this sense of community, modeling, a love of learning, judgment, compassion, respect, all of those things are what obviously make us human compared to a machine. And to be able to program something, to be able to make all of those decisions based on those things, that's really what our teachers are about, and that's what makes them so important in the work that we do. And so I'm going to turn it back over to Raymond, and he's going to talk about next steps.
So we, we put together a couple of next steps here. And the first, the first bullet, bullet item there is, you know, our thought is that we would continuously monitor the safety and, and privacy laws and adapt our policies and regulations accordingly, because I think that's very foundational when we talk about rolling AI out. We need, we need those things in place to build upon. The next item is the implementation of the, of the Nevada K-12 Computer Science Standards, which I think were released in June of 2018, if I'm not mistaken. And, and those standards really go into teaching our students some of the skills that they're going to need to be an engaged citizen in, in an AI-driven kind of world, or to even engineer and, and produce some of those AI-type of sensors and equipment. Some of those core areas are algorithms and programming, computing systems, and data analysis. So, so they start digging into that core technology that would, that they can build upon as they, as they get into college and career. And then the third item is continue to research and explore AI capabilities and where we can utilize it within our, our learning environment to maximize learning outcomes. And, and really, these, these three items here are kind of tied together because, you know, consumer demand really drives business and industry. And then the needs of business and industry kind of drive education as to what we need to do to our students to get them ready to be competitive in the job market out there. So that's, those are kind of the three areas that, that we're kind of looking at as we move forward. And with that, do you guys have any questions for us?
Yeah. Questions? Well, you know, you know, this is important going forward for both students and teachers, and our community, and parents. And we've got next steps. How do the next steps happen? Is it by magic, or if you two go away? Do we have to have, you know, our superintendent? Do we, we, do we need a continuing advisory committee looking at these and testing with teachers? What, what do we need that this doesn't get away from us and, or catch up on this in a way we don't want to see?
I think it would be a conversation between several folks, obviously Mrs. Kima and, and Mr. Stokes, to see the direction that we're going and how we'll tie into curriculum as we move forward and how technology can support all of that process.
Well, I mean, you pointed out some good things of how it can help teachers free up time. Do you get teachers involved? Do you pilot these programs? I mean, how does it happen? Does this board have to make a, a policy decision?
I, I think, again, it would come back to conversations amongst members, you know, Mr. Stokes and his executive team as to the direction that, that we want to go. And, and going back to making sure that the technology is going to be compliant with our federal laws and in line with the Nevada state standards that have just been released. I think that the next step is to have additional conversations. And absolutely, I think teachers involved is always a good thing. And, yeah, I think that's probably the, you know, the next step.
Well, then, I'll speak to our superintendent and then to our legal counsel, because they're involved in it right now. I mean, they've got, the safeguards in the legal profession might be the same as what we're going to use in education. To get the conversation, to continue the conversation, this is just an introduction to where we are and what, what the possibilities are. Richard, would you, could you just either talk to it or maybe bring something back to the board as to what you would suggest? So this is something that we don't lose sight of for the teachers and students?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I've thought, where our district has been and where we are now, and I would say in the last 15 years, I think we've, we've been pretty good about following educational trends. I think as, as the technology has become available, we have been forward-thinking, we have been able to gauge the resources that we have. And, and I'm just thinking back when we first gave our middle school students one-to-one devices. I'm thinking how much better the current devices are than the ones that we bought four, five years ago, and all of the things that we learned as that technology became mainstream in our schools. I'm thinking that the artificial intelligence concept is going to follow simple or similar conditions. I think as it becomes accessible and affordable and applicable, all of those things, then I think we can take some of those steps. And I loved the presentation tonight because a lot of those things are already part of our society. They're becoming part of our classrooms, part of our industry. And I, I think that, I don't think we have to rush out to make any immediate statements or decisions. I think we continue to do what we've always done. We watch, we position ourselves so that we can move when the timing is right. And we then use those technologies to benefit the world of our staff and our students. So I, I guess I think it's great that we have these conversations. It's really interesting, and it's going to become more of what we do within our work. So, so I think, you know, having folks like Dr. Morris and Mr. Maderios able, able to advise us and keep us informed, I think that is a good piece. I'm not sure just how much we have to be ready in the next six weeks, six months, six years. I mean, I, I really don't understand the, the application that much, but I'm amazed at what it can do and, and how it's already doing things for us. And I, I think that it will be a, a progression that we enter, I don't know, with, with some forethought, certainly. But I'm, I, I don't know. I'm kind of talking in circles here, but I, I think there will be a natural progression that occurs as we, as we continue in our work.
Leanne and Raymond, in place, if they were to leave, I mean, someone needs to just kind of just shape where we're, we're going to go with this for the benefit of the, the students and teachers. That's, I don't know.
I guess my question is, I don't even know how we would do that, because so much of it is still out there and under development. I mean, I have no idea what our policy would look like or why we would do that at this point, except for just being aware that it's coming and watching the trends, honestly.
And I think that's exactly right, just staying abreast of the research that's out there. I mean, even just the computer science standards, how does data science play into that? And as we, you know, start rolling that out and, and educating our, you know, our students on what does that, what does that look like, you know, from, from an educational standpoint as, you know, algorithms are being developed and what, what decisions are being made? So I, I definitely think it's, it's an awareness at this point, and as I mentioned before, thoughtfully and cautiously as we move forward.
And Michael, you have anything you want to add from the legal?
I think Mr. Maderos threw me a bone when he, he talked about the confidentiality and the child protection laws. I think to a certain extent, the laws are going to have to catch up with the technology because the laws were created for things like iPhones and, and cyberbullying and pornography. And we've just got a whole new dimension with the kinds of material that's going to be out there now. So the laws, I think, will catch up.
Any questions, comments from, from the audience?
I just want to go back home and watch War Games and Total Recall. Got to get caught up a little bit more.
Okay, seeing none. Leanne, Raymond, thank you so very much. And this is probably going to be a first of a continuing series of updates as we go forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board.
Number 11, Report on CCSD School Progressive Discipline Plan. District Implementation Report as Required by NRS 392.4644. And Sue?
Thank you, Susan Record, or Susan Kima for the record. Well, you know what? This agenda item is going to be, is, yeah, there you go. This agenda item isn't going to be as fascinating as the ones we just, we just went through. It does serve, this agenda item does serve as board notification that all 10 element, or all 10 schools have submitted their discipline plans per NRS 392.4644 to my office. And tomorrow, I will be submitting the required Nevada Department of Education form, the summary, which is the first page of your board packet. This is all that's required. We're not required to submit the plans themselves, just the summary page to the state, but the plans will be, the plans will be up on the site website and the district website as well. And then just for your information, a focus area on this particular year's plan, the District Discipline Committee provided training on August 8th to all element, or all district administrators on NRS 392.4645, which was the temporary removal of a student from the classroom, all principals, including parents who were not district employees. We also asked me, asked principals to make sure that the parents that served on this committee to develop this plan were not district employees. So that was, that was a focus area.
A discussion item, and it's ready to be submitted.
Correct.
Okay, any questions, concerns? Okay, going on to agenda item number 12, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Proposed Changes to CCSD Policy 516, Class Rank, which is the second reading, and this is for possible action.
There weren't any additional suggestions for changing this policy at the last board meeting, so therefore I recommend approval as presented.
If there's no questions, do I have a motion?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt revisions as presented and approve October 9, 2018 as a revised date on CCSD Policy 516, Class Rank.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any input from the audience, questions, additions, changes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, agenda item number...
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number 13, Discussion and Possible Action to Adopt a Resolution in Support of Fund Our Future Nevada, a Coalition of Student, Parent, Teacher, and Education Partners Seeking Sufficient Funding for Nevada Public Schools to Provide Appropriate and Necessary Resources Needed for Student Success. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This is the resolution that has been personalized to include Carson City School District putting their name up with other school districts in the state to essentially get behind and support the efforts of the group that spoke to our, our board at the last meeting. This document has been in your packet, and by putting our name on this, we essentially are, are saying that we back their ideas and their thinking.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt, as submitted, the resolution in support of Fund Our Future Nevada.
I have a couple of questions. Just in the third pair, and, and is this, was this document prepared by us or was it prepared by Fund Our Future?
Fund Our Future were the official authors. We inserted our name where it looked like it would work.
It would fit? Okay, just because, okay, mine were a couple of things where I thought the phrasing was wrong, and so I was going to do that. But if it's them, I'm not sure if we change it, or should we change it?
I think that we have the capacity to change the document to fit our needs.
Okay. Well, I think that in paragraph three, where it says Nevada ranks for the bottom in the nation for funding K-12 education, and given a D minus for its education, was it, it received it, was it given? I just think that that sentence doesn't make sense. In the fifth paragraph, which is two down from that paragraph, ELC studies confirm low rankings on school funding correlate to poor state performance on key resource indicators, including, and then it lists them, I would do a colon rather than a semicolon there because you're listing the different indicators. And then on the second page, with the second paragraph, Fund Our Future Nevada believes new revenue dedicated to public education actually serve to increase funding to support. I think I should say should actually serve to support. So those are what I noticed.
Richard, my questions were the same as my email to you a while ago, and, and AJ was good enough to respond, and I appreciated his comments, and, and I don't disagree. But, I mean, this is a resolution, and it's generally vague, and I think it's meant to be vague. You know, but I would like to really get some more information, you know, as opposed to just giving these folks carte blanche to say, you know, get us funded the way we think we should be funded. I agree, we're, we need more funding, but I think when we start getting into the details of how that funding is going to take place, their step-one approach I like. You know, you know, they talked about increasing funding as opposed to supplanting, which I'm all in favor of. in favor of, but then beyond that, you know, are we raising taxes? What taxes are we looking at raising? You know, what are we doing? I want to be real careful. We're not just, you know, saying, go forward and do what you think is the best thing to do, because I think that could have some big implications on our district and our, you know, our community as a whole.
And my thought is, so we've already supported this as a school board with NASB. And so this is just adding our individual school board support, correct?
No, NASB hasn't had anything to do with this proclamation. We did invest.
Invest, okay.
Which is the superintendent's.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, it wasn't NASB. This is all on their own. And I'll have to tell you, this was the only thing on the Clark County School Board agenda that got a 7-0 vote, just to let you know.
And I think that as an education policy board who is grappling with funding issues and looking down the road every year and talking about what's going to happen when the reality hits, and it sounds like next year the reality could hit and we might get saved by a rainy day, and then we're going to be looking for two years when, because everybody just keeps kicking the can down a couple of years so that they don't have to get the blood on their hands. I think that at some point, we have to stand up and kind of say, okay, this is a group of parents and citizens who are advocating on behalf of education and the funding issues we have within our state and looking for, looking for some relief with the legislature. And I think that supporting that is really important and that's something that I personally support. I think that what that's going to look like is going to be a question for the legislature, but getting the legislature to have these meaningful discussions is going to take everybody standing up and saying, we need to look at this. This is a true issue impacting our schools and our students. And so that's kind of my take on it.
I can tell you, Trustee Cassiopa, that part of the effort of this particular group is to get the legislators to look at a cost basis for funding education. So rather than just rolling over and saying, well, we're going to give you what we gave you last year, but with a 2% roll-up, they're actually saying, hey, let's look at the cost of special ed, let's look at the cost of what it costs to give your folks a 3% raise plus an increase in the benefits that are naturally going to occur. And then let's fund you according to what your actual costs are. I've never seen too many bills that go before the legislature that are taken, you know, carte blanche without any changes. There's always the discussion and the give and take that occurs just in the political process and I expect that would happen regardless of what the language says in this particular document.
Plus, I think that everybody's just really, really frustrated with them doing taxes for education and then it's just supplanting it and it's not supplanting it. And I think that's what really drove this group was after the marijuana tax thing and that money didn't go where it was supposed to. And that group is based in Vegas and they didn't get the room taxes that they're supposed to. So I think it's just a frustration with the supplanting.
And the room taxes were meant to go statewide, weren't they? Not just to Clark County. Most of them are raised in Clark County, but it's meant to benefit the entire state. And so the whole state has lost out on that.
And I think if I understand the intent of this, I don't have a problem supporting the intent. I just, as we go forward, I want to make sure we're obviously tracking this carefully and I would ask, you know, AJ to give us periodic updates on where this is at, because I don't want us to get into a situation where, you know, our community partners come back to us and say, you know, you blindly supported something and now look what it did.
Okay, and I guess I just have a quick question because I'm, I think this is somewhere where we do have an interest, but when we, a couple of years ago, when the marijuana bill was coming and we received counsel, that we didn't have, that was beyond our policy and scope and jurisdiction to do. Is this within our ability to make a resolution as a body to support this?
I believe it is. The, there isn't really a specific measure here that is being proposed and it's, you're not endorsing an entire platform or agenda, but rather you are asking for improved and more adequate funding for the students of the state so that you can provide a higher quality system of education. So I believe that this is entirely consistent with your mission, your statutory charge, and I don't have a problem from a legal perspective.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the, from the audience, the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, motions carried unanimously. Agenda item number 14, approval and consent agenda. This is for possible action.
I move that, I move that the Carson City School Board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Okay, motion to second. Any questions, concerns, any from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Agenda item number 15, informational items. Any questions, concerns? Agenda item number 16, request for future agenda topics.
I have one. So this week, you know, and I often get contacted by teachers with complaints or concerns, and I've been kind of pushing back the last year and asking them to kind of come forward and voice their concerns. And so one of the concerns that was raised to me Friday night was that they were requesting a survey about the climate of our employees. And they were feeling as if we had gone through all the work a few years ago and nothing has changed as a result. And so, you know, honestly, I invited the teacher to come in, speak at Public Comment, and what I really wasn't expecting was, you know, a really detailed response to me about the reasons they were intimidated about coming forward. And so I think that one of the things that we need to look at is, how are we going to gauge employee satisfaction? So we're talking every meeting about getting educators and keeping them in the school and we're recruiting our high school seniors and juniors and supporting them and making those decisions, but if the teachers in our classrooms, and they're not, it's not just for one school that I hear from, and I know that there's other members of the board that these people reach out to as well, I assume, just from comments they say to me. And I'm sure they talk to the teachers' union, I would hope they talk to the teachers' union. But there is a sense of dissatisfaction, intimidation, and really unhappiness. And I don't think that these are the teachers that we can afford to lose, honestly. The people I know as the educators that I know them to be, you can't afford for them to go 15 minutes away to get a job. And we're right in the middle. There's Douglas, there's Washoe, there's Lyon County, and all of those districts need teachers just as much as we do. And so I think that as a board, we need to look at doing some kind of a climate survey for our staff and we probably need it to be independent because for whatever reason, there's a level of distrust. And so I don't know what that looks like, but I think we want to have some kind of independent person come in and talk to our different groups, administrators, our classified staff, our certified staff, maybe even our district-level staff, and see what that consensus is and then really look at what are the issues that people are so unhappy about? Because that's one of the questions I ask. I don't get what it is. And I ask, what, what is the one thing? And I don't get a good answer. And so I don't know exactly what the data is going to show. I just know that I'm hearing it over and over and over again. And I feel like as an elected official, I'm pushing back, I'm pushing back, I'm pushing back. And at some point, I have to realize I'm representing them. They voted for me to be up here making these decisions. And so as an elected official, as much as it pains me to be the person speaking for people who want to be anonymous, at this point, I feel like somebody has to say it. So that's my request.
And that's funny because I have that, almost the same thing, although that we just never had a follow-up of how, when we had those surveys, what we did as a group or whatever to satisfy some of those concerns that were brought. We keep having survey after survey after survey and I don't know if we're doing what we need to do to answer those questions because it sounds like we have the same problem as we had when Ryan requested the study, what was it, two years ago, three years ago now? And then keeping on that survey thing, we keep seeing that we've had parent surveys, we have the surveys in here for parent education. I'd kind of like to see those results. I don't want a presentation on them, but I would like to have that data, even if it's in the consent agenda, that says, here's the results from the survey from Mark Twain's parents or Mark Twain students or the high school students. Because we keep hearing about that they're doing all these surveys, but we're not getting any of those results. I have no idea, even when Dr. Perdell was here and we would ask, we don't get to see that information. And I think it's real important, if we're having all these surveys, that we get to see that information. I don't want to have a workshop, I don't want to have a discussion unless there's something in those surveys that we read that needs to be discussed. But I would just like, just in the.
I just want to get back to, what are you requesting as a future agenda item?
So I'm requesting that we look at doing a climate, an independent climate survey.
We're going to put that on as an agenda item so we can discuss it openly.
Yes.
Right now, we can't go too far with this.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
I have one, two different agenda. Just because we've heard a lot about explosive kids and the behavior problems and we've had talk about Boys Town Model and some other different things, but I'd like to have an agenda item on what options do we have to deal with some of these kids that are so disruptive in the classroom. I understand self-contained classrooms aren't there anymore, but what other options do we have as a district on how to, or, and if there's something we need to put into place?
I was going to add to that. That's exactly what I was thinking of and I, Ann Seer came to mind, is having somebody that comes down on a future agenda item to talk about that. Because our policy right now is if we have a disruptive student, hands off, you can't touch him, you can't do anything except evacuate the classroom and disrupt 23 other kids. And I'm just, and I know that's not our policy, but it's the law, but I'd like to get some more information as to, you know, and start, maybe start an effort to swing in that pendulum back to the middle somewhere where every kid has rights and we need to protect every kid's rights, you know, but every kid has rights, not just the one causing trouble.
And I hate to bring this up a second time tonight, but I would like to have a discussion about the direction of our board meetings because I feel like the last two weeks, I've been really frustrated because I feel like we're sitting here with a lot of fluff and discussion items and it's like, let's get to the business. Our staff doesn't need to be here this late, we don't need to be here this late. If it's not pertinent business, let's really focus on what we need to do. And if we're here talking about business, you know, I'd, fine, let's bring up all these financials that we sign every meeting. Let's talk about those types of things. Let's talk with the teachers' union about what's going on, you know, in the world of our teachers. But I think that we're, it's like educational sessions and I get it, but I know where to go get education if I need it and so that's.
Put that as an agenda item and we'll have a good discussion. Okay, without objection, we are adjourned.